Do you say something through the mic?
Hello?
Good. Fine, give me a second, I'll switch this over.
Okay, thanks Dave.
I don't know, Mike, we're missing another Mike, aren't we?
Inside, one, two.
Oh, is this one blank?
Yeah.
Three, four, one.
But, yeah, okay.
And then after that, go over there, this will go.
Is that okay?
Yep, that's fine.
All right, gentlemen, why don't you go ahead and start?
Thanks Dave.
Good evening, welcome to the regular scheduled meeting of the Dyton Board of Selectmen. Wednesday, October 26, 2022, is 6:02 PM. It's a hybrid meeting via Zoom and in person. The Zoom meeting information, meeting ID is 863-2460-1752. Passcode 879973. Public input may be provided using the following methods. By contacting the Board of Selectmen office at boardofselectmen@dyton-ma.gov to provide input prior to the meeting. Or via Zoom call-in by phone. Continued play on Dyton Channel 9 and on YouTube at www.youtube.com/townofdyton. This meeting is being recorded. The listing of matters are those reasonably anticipated by the Chair, which may be discussed at the meeting. Not all items listed may in fact be discussed, and the items not listed may also be brought up for discussion to the extent permitted by law. At this time, I would like to call the auditor. Mr. Pacheco?
Present.
Mr. Karen?
Present.
Chairman Hull is also present. We will be entering into executive session under Massachusetts General Law, Chapter 30A, Section 21A3, to discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining. If an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the bargaining position of the public body and the Chair so declares, to discuss Dyton Dispatches Union. We will be returning to open session following the executive session. I will entertain a motion to go into executive session.
I'll make that motion.
Motion made in second, all those in favor, Mr. Pacheco?
Aye.
Mr. Karen?
Aye.
Chairman Hull is an aye. Thank you. By pledge allegiance to the flag, and also a moment, followed by a moment of silence. Y'all ready? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Since our last meeting, three members of the Dyton community have passed. Eleanor Dupont passed away in the beginning of October. Ellie was Secretary of the Board of Selectmen for many years. Mary Costa of Dyton passed away in late September. And also passing at the age of 58 years of age was James Dutra. He was born in Torren, the son of Mary Dutra and the late George Dutra. I ask that we have a moment of silence on their behalf. Thank you. First on the agenda is a special commendation. Mr. Mullen, would you like to introduce, or would you be okay?
So, yeah, no, like if you want to take over and introduce the Chief and Sergeant McGovern?
Chief Cronin, could you come up please?
Sure. To the podium?
Yes. We are all very much, or most residents Dyton, are very much aware of an incident that touched most of this community last week. And fortunately, it ended well. And it ended well because of the actions of many members of this community, but especially the Dyton Police Department, and especially the efforts of Sergeant Jason McGovern. Here this evening is Chief Sean Cronin to explain the events and also to recognize one of Dyton's finest.
Thank you, Mr. Hull. So, last Thursday, we got a call that there was a missing young boy in the north end of town. They, we started a search with who was on, who was working, we called for mutual aid, they assisted. Once it got to a certain threshold, we recognized we needed more assets. We activated what's called SEMLIKE, it's a regional council with many, many assets. Officers, air drones, ATVs, it's an amazing, amazing resource. And Jason was actually in training that day in Plymouth. It was a half day, Jason is also on SEMLIKE Search and Rescue, he represents Dyton on that team. When he got that call, I have to applaud his dedication because, I mean, he could have gone to any call, but he knew that it was his town. So, Jason came running, he reported to the command post, he got his assignment, and he went out. And fortunately, it was an incredible ending, and the boy was found.
Thank you, Mr. McGovern. Would you like to come up, please?
Here?
Yes. We want to thank you for what you did, but also for your service to the Town of Dyton. And with that being said, we have an official commendation that I would like to read to you. On Thursday, October 20, 2022, the Dyton Police Department was made aware of the disappearance of a 14-year-old boy with autism from North Dyton. The Dyton Police Department responded together with local and regional law enforcement partners. The Southeastern Massachusetts Law Enforcement Council, Council's Search and Rescue Team was also activated. Dyton Police Department Sergeant Jason McGovern, a member of SEMLIKE's Search and Rescue Team, responded as part of his unit's mobilization and joint efforts to search for the young boy. After a six-hour search, Sergeant McGovern found the young boy unharmed and safe. Together, the two walked back to the boy's home, where his parents were anxiously waiting along with the Dyton Fire Department ambulance personnel. As a direct result of Sergeant McGovern's actions, this child was saved from harm. Sergeant Jason McGovern, your actions reflect highly, not only upon yourself, but also on credibility and reputation of the Town of Dyton Police Department and its personnel. On behalf of our grateful community, we extend our sincere appreciation. In witness whereof, we have hereunto set our hands and cause the great seal of the Town of Dyton to be affixed on this, the 26th day of October, 2022. Board of Selectmen of the Town of Dyton, Leonard E. Hull, Jr., Chairman, Peter D. Karen, Clerk, and Kenneth J. Pacheco, Member of the Board of Selectmen.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Pacheco?
Yes, Sergeant, I'd like to congratulate you on the great job that you did. Any parent and grandparent, we were on pins and needles that day checking. We see the text from our town administrator regarding what was going on. And I was so happy and pleased that he was able to be found through your effort. Also, I want to thank our police chief, because this was his first big test as our new police chief, and he passed the red flag colors, but what a great job you did, and I'm sure the parents will forever be thankful. So, thank you.
Mr. Karen?
As a parent in the family who almost lost a child, not in the same way, but somebody who had troubles from home, I know your heart goes into your throat, and you just think the worst, and I'm glad you were there to comfort him. Nice job.
Thank you. Thank you. We're very fortunate. The EMS of the Town of Dyton is superb, police, fire, ambulance. We're very, very fortunate, and certainly a tax dollar well spent. Appreciate the efforts of all of you, thank you. Thank you. Next on the agenda is Susanna Madeiras, invitation.
Do you have a recommendation, excuse me, Mr. Chair, we do have a recommendation from the Chief to appoint Mr. Johnson as a part-time dispatcher?
Oh, I'm sorry.
Yes.
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 Thank you.
I was going to walk them out, okay. Thank you.
You have the position of part-time communications dispatcher, when would they be starting?
So, it's interesting, we have to make sure that we have, we can get any new candidate into the certain classes from the state. My understanding is it's going to be later, I want to say November, December. However, there's plenty of in-house time that needs to get accrued in training that this gentleman can start sooner, and then go to the class after, so it's, I guess it's really either way. You can go to the class first, you can go to the class during, but you still need to accrue and accumulate so many hours in training, so.
And that training will start as soon as our approval?
Yes, sir. Yes, sir.
Are there any questions?
No, so he won't actually start working as a dispatcher until he's gone through the training?
Correct.
I understand with the in-house stuff, he needs to know what's going on and.
Yeah, he'll, he'll learn the operating systems, he won't be able to use E911 yet. He can answer the business phone.
Sure.
But not, not, not only that. Good point.
With that being said, I will entertain a motion to appoint Dalton T. Johnson as a part-time communications dispatcher for the Town of Dyton.
I'll make a motion at the Board of Selectmen to appoint Dalton T. Johnson as a part-time communications dispatcher.
Motion made in second, all those in favor, Mr. Pacheco?
Aye.
Mr. Karen?
Aye.
Chairman Hull is an aye.
Excellent.
Is this Mr. Dalton?
It is.
I saw him back there, I thought he was training for cable.
Yeah. Maybe he's doing that too. But yes, his application was stellar, we had some good conversations, he's got a great demeanor, I think he'll fit in well.
Awesome.
Welcome aboard.
Thank you, welcome aboard, thank you for helping out. Thank you. And Zach, it's good to see you back there as well, thank you.
So, it's Andrew, I've done the same thing, Mr. Chairman.
Andrew, thank you. Hi Sue.
Hi guys.
Come on up, please. We having another invitation to tree lighting ceremony?
It is, it's that time of the year, the most wonderful time of the year, right?
Yes.
The holiday season is upon us, and so I'm here from the committee. We have Tom, who's here also from the committee, we're a very small committee, as you guys know, it's about six of us. But we get it done, we get it done, but I'm here to cordially invite the Board of Selectmen to join us on that night, as you always do. Wouldn't be the same without your singing voices there. Peter, this is all new to you, but you will get up there and you guys will sing. Yeah, invitations have gone out to the other dignitaries, Pat Had Dad, Mark Pacheco, a few others. And we're still in the stages of inviting some of the people, you know, the, you know, Boy Scouts, Girl Scouts, Ms. Bristol County, all that wonderful stuff. But we did get a message that came in last night, that Santa and Mrs. Claus will be here. They will be stopping in Dyton for all the little good kids from Dyton, so just want to thank you again. We couldn't do this without your support. You know, we are nonprofit, we, you know, we run this on donations, as you know. I mean, everything is free, I don't know how much you know about the tree lighting. Yeah, everything is free, whether it be the popcorn, the hot dogs. Couldn't do it without the Lions, the Lions donate all the hot dogs. Members of the committee volunteer the cake, some popcorn, some of it's paid for, but it's all through donations, you know. Charlie from Dunkin' Donuts, he is amazing, he gives us a good-sized donation every year, plus all free coffee and hot chocolate, Munchkins Donuts. Pat Had Dad brings two huge urns of hot chocolate every year. So, we don't spend a lot of money, we don't bring in a lot of money, but we don't spend a lot either, you know. We have to give Tommy most of the money, you know, for the lights for the trees and to, you know, fix this or fix that. We're going to add more lights this year, Tom, because we added, we added lights, more as a safety thing. Am I correct? Yes, so that's one of our top priorities, we moved from down that end up this end last year, and we had to put in some lights and stuff like that. But again, couldn't do it without the Board allowing us to use the properties and setting everything up, and that's why it's so important for you guys to be here, and of course, our town administrator, he was such a good doobie last year, he was running around getting his hot chocolate and picking up hot chocolate, and him and his family were a huge help, so he's already been initiated. He's already been initiated, so Peter's next. Ken's an old pro, you're a sophomore going into this, Lenny, so, but again, thank you. I usually bring hats, Santa hats for you guys. I can't find Santa hats everywhere, anywhere, they've had Christmas stuff out.
For months.
For months, and I couldn't, I even went to BJ's here, I wanted to find Santa hats. Couldn't find Santa hats. So, usually I give you guys the Santa hat, but you'll get them that night, you'll get them that night. So, again, it's the Saturday after Thanksgiving, starts at 3 o'clock. Karen will have, next week will be on the announcements, right? Yeah, starts at 3 with Mrs. Claus in here, and then festivities go outside, and then after Santa comes on the fire truck or the trailer tractor, or something. Then we come back in here, this was when the kids sit with Santa, tell Santa what they want for Christmas, pictures are taken, and it's a lot of fun, it's a lot of fun. It's my 18th year doing it, and I love it, I love it, you know, and God willing, I'll do it again next year, so.
We, you mentioned about donations, if anyone in the community wanted to make a donation, how would they go about doing that?
So, we have a treasurer, but it gets a little sticky situation where she doesn't want her personal information, you know, out there, and so we do send out a letter, so we have it sent, when I was here, it would come to me at the Town Hall, Town Clerk's office, and so Mark, Mark, our Town Clerk, is a member this year, as of last year, so, which works out great. We need the strong guys to carry all the big stuff and the heavy stuff, so it would go to Mark, so.
And check would be made out too?
Okay, so I don't have that in front, the Dyton Holiday Committee, it's the Dyton Holiday Committee.
The Dyton Holiday Committee?
Yeah.
And they would see Clerk.
Yeah, and care of the Town Clerk, so we will be sending out letters, I think, next week to the local businesses, but if anybody tonight would like to donate, we would gladly take your donation.
Have we already had a deficit?
Huh?
Have we already had a deficit?
Um, no, no, we're, we're, we're good, we have enough for this year, we have enough money for the next couple of years, unless Tommy uses it all for lights and bulbs and stuff like that, but.
We have enough to maintain what we have, it's always nice to add some stuff. Sure. And stuff deteriorates fast when you press. Okay.
Yeah, so we are looking to get new stuff out, the stuff outside has been painted and repainted, and you know, the stuff that the Highway Department puts up, so it's time for us to start looking. But last year, we spent money on other stuff, so we try to do a little bit every year. Every year, we add to the decorations and so forth and so forth. So, we were, we were lucky, we got some good donations last year from the local banks, and again, Charlie from Dunkin' Donuts is amazing. He keeps this, he keeps it going, so, but again, Board of Selectmen, Fire Chief, Police Chief, unbelievable Highway Department, couldn't do it without them, so I'm very thankful, so everyone, and I just hope everybody comes out. It's rain or shine, right, Tommy, unless we have a blizzard, unless we have a blizzard, it's rain or shine, you know. So, we've been pretty lucky, we've always had pretty good weather, and we look forward to seeing everybody here.
Thank you.
Oh, and we have gotten that the elementary school will be coming, the kids will be singing, the DR marching band, and the high school flute ensemble, and Chris, Kristen Vocchio, she comes every year, so. It should be a good night, should be fun.
Mr. Pacheco, any questions?
No, just nice to see you, Sue, I haven't seen you in a while.
I know, I know, my life's been a little bit of a whirlwind, but, you know, yeah, it's just some.
Mr. Karen?
And will Dave Marvel be there also as?
Oh, and I, God, we can't forget our friend Dave Marvel, couldn't do it without Dave, Dave does up the karaoke. He, we don't worry about any of that, because Dave does all of that, you know, he brings all the equipment, yes, he does an awesome job. So, yes, and Dave is on the committee, so he's one of the six, he's one of the six, so.
This is November 26.
November 26, the Saturday, starts at 3, and if anybody would love to volunteer, anybody wants to join the committee, absolutely. Our next meeting is November, okay, where's Tommy? November 10, is that a Thursday? November 10. November 10, a Thursday, at 6:30, and we're meeting in the Clerk's office. So, yes, if anybody would like to come and volunteer, or just volunteer that night, we'd love to have you.
Mr. Karen, you had a question?
A quick question.
Yes.
The application says it's not until 3:30, so is it?
Is it 3:30? I wasn't sure if they may, they might have changed it, usually it's 3 or 3:30, that's when Mrs. Claus, the first thing on the agenda is Mrs. Claus. Yeah, I don't have, I don't have the posting with me, I apologize, but kind of rushed out of the house. But it's either 3 or 3:30, but next week Karen has it, right Karen, and it'll be on the announcements, so you'll know for sure. It's either 3 or 3:30, but Mrs. Claus, that's when Mrs. Claus is here.
Thank you, I'd also like to reach out to the Board of Assessors. There are two members who are members of choir with fine voices.
Oh, okay.
Mrs. Gulat, and many people don't know, because he doesn't sing in Dyton at his church, as Mrs. Gulat and I do, but also Bill Moore sings professionally.
Well, it's always an open invitation for Nancy, Nancy's been, Nancy's been on that stage many times, so it's always an open invitation to Nancy, we, you know, we love having her, and actually, anybody that wants to come up on this, we bring up all the little kids, so they can sing, more people.
Strengthen numbers.
The more, it is, you know, more people, the merrier, yeah, we really enjoy it. And it's not that long, it's, you know, four hours or so, and it's just, it's just fun. Perfect little Dyton.
Yes. Wonderful, wonderful.
Thank you, thank you so much.
I have a request for the use of the Dyton Old Town Hall and surrounding campus for the event on November 26, and it's at starting time at 3:30 PM to 6:30 PM. This Dyton Holiday Committee request is signed by the Clerk, who is a member of the committee, Mark Pacheco. And Mr. Pillings has signed off on it, and has stated that if food is going to be served, the food permit will be.
Right, and we have done a letter to the Board of Health, we do every year for them to waive the fee on the food permit, and, and we always, we have the, because we do serve hot dogs and cake and stuff, so there's two members on the Dyton Lions that certified, so serve safe?
Safe, serve safe.
Yeah, so, because we have to have somebody certified there in order to be able to serve the foods and stuff, so, we do that.
Cool.
Yes, and in the past, the Board of Health has always waived the fee for the food permit. I think it's been sent to them already, if I'm not mistaken, so, but I'm sure we'll hear that from them soon.
Thank you. Now, I noticed that there's a schedule of rental fees, will we need to vote on waiving that fee as well?
Yes.
So, we will entertain two motions. The first motion would be to grant the request of the Dyton Holiday Committee to use the Dyton Old Town Hall and surrounding campus on November 26.
I'll make that motion.
Second.
Motion made in second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Pacheco?
Aye.
Mr. Karen?
Aye.
Chairman Hull is an aye. The second motion that I will entertain is the waiving of the rental fee for the Old Town Hall, since there is no fee for the field, so I believe it would just be the waiving of the rental fee for the Old Town Hall.
I'll make that motion.
Second.
Motion made in second, all those in favor, Mr. Pacheco?
Aye.
Mr. Karen?
Certainly aye.
Chairman Hull is an aye. Thank you very much.
Oh, thank you so much, as always, thank you for all your support, really appreciate it, and we'll see you soon. Have a wonderful Thanksgiving.
Thanks, Sue.
Next on the agenda, Dyton Water District request for winter Main Street road construction. Mr. Cronin is here to speak on, as well as Mr. Ferry. Mr. Cronin, good to see you.
Good to see you.
Would you want to give us a synopsis of when and what is going on on Main Street?
So, C-Norton is mobilizing as we speak, as everyone's probably seen the bales, the silt bales out there. They're planning on starting construction November 7. They're going to be stringing main out this weekend possibly, so they're, they're just started getting the water main, that was the big holdup. It's a little out of the norm to start this late, but, you know, we have the company now, we should, we should really act on it. So, that, they plan on starting November 7, starting on the William Street side of Main Street, and going as long as the winter permits. Which, I mean, in the, our winters haven't been hard until, I mean, let's hope, January, February. They can get a long way in, through November and December, they'll get quite a bit done. So, the hopes, the hope is to, it's going to be done in phases. I don't have it in front of me, but if you think of the entire street, it's going to be up to a point, then connect everybody, pressure test first, chlorinate, then connect, so a portion will be finished, then they'll continue on to the next portion, and hopefully, in due time, that, it won't take, hopefully, as long as we possibly think, it shouldn't be bad. But we are here to, there was a bylaw or a rule and reg with, with the town cutting the road in the winter after a certain time, I believe, and so, the reason I'm here is to ask to have that waived in lieu of us having to have waited this long to get the pipe, to do the work, now it's here, they want to get going, so we're asking if you would please waive that to, to get, to get the job done.
I understand. Mr. Pacheco, any questions? I'm going to take this in two segments, the specific request that you have made, followed by some questions about the overall project.
Sure.
Just so it kind of makes sense.
Yeah.
So, do we have any questions? We have a letter to Mr. Ferry from Woodward and Current requesting an exception to the use of the CDF for trench backfilling during the Town of Dyton's winter moratorium. Are there any questions specific to that?
What is the CDF then, I'm not familiar.
So, we're, so they're going to be, they're going to be doing trenching and laying the water main, right? So, five feet deep trenching, backfilling, compacting. They have to compact to a certain standard, and there's someone there checking it the whole way down. So, it's, it's not, it's not going to be as simple as when you're in the backyard, you just put it in there. So, it's, it's not, it's not going to be as simple as when you're in the backyard, you just put it in there, you're done. So, it's, it's, it's a little more tech, they'll have a machine there, and you'll see it compacting everything, and then someone from Woodward and Curran will be there testing it all, the whole way. So, there, there won't, there won't be any, oh, we missed that spot. That's their job, they're there to test the compaction, what they're putting in there. We know they're going to be putting in gravel, not, not sand, so it'll be, it's better. It'll compact much better. So, and then, at the end of the day, they, they're going to be paving everything. So, you won't have trenches left with just gravel there, it'll, it'll be paved. It should do a good jo, it should do, I mean, the road isn't great to begin with, I'm not saying it is, it's not going to be an improvement, but we know we're going to, Tom's going to be fixing the road, you know, in the next year or so, so it, it, it should do, and then if, if that breaks up, their job is to come back and fix that. So, anything that is out of the ordinary, Tom will recognize it, tell them to fix it, they fix it. If a trench settles, it gets fixed, so.
You don't see any road closure, it's going to be, what, one lane?
One lane will be open. We only have a small portion of temporary water, I believe, that's near Elm Street. I don't know if we'll even get there this winter, if we do, that's amazing. So, I mean, it will be close, I think we can get close to that. So, I mean, it might be tough doing the temporary in the winter, there'll be some other obstacles there, but hopefully, we can get there, and I did talk to Woodward and Curran today, and I talked to Tom. If there isn't any issues with plowing, C. Norton can, can help. Not that, and Tom doesn't need it, because we talked about it, he should be fine. Tom expressed that, but he's in charge, it's his road, so if, if he sees anything that needs to be repaired on a daily basis, or, you know, if they're three hundred feet up and fifty feet down, you're looking, this needs to be done, it will get done.
So, if there's, for example, a blizzard coming?
Exactly.
He knows about it, he can speak to them, say this is going to be done by...
Yep, yep, they'll have to shut down work and fix what they, what, what needs to be done before a blizzard, special, special for stuff like that, yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Karen, any questions?
Sure, when you say one-lane road, is it stopping the traffic so the cars can come one direction, then opening it up for the cars in the other direction?
Yeah, so, they're going to be working on one si, ah, God. Eastbound lane, thanks, Tom, horrible with that stuff. They'll be on the eastbound lane. They'll have an excavator digging, and generally, there's a loader backfilling, and sometimes they might have a third machine, but I don't know if there's a room for it compacting. So, or it's just, they have it on the side, and then they come in. It's a really tight area where they'll be working, so it's not a lot of stop and go. So, it's not like half the road's shut down.
Yep.
It's coned off, they have their trench box there, and they're working in a relatively small area, if it makes sense. I'd say the size of this room, and then they keep going. As, as, as they keep digging, they go. So, you can anticipate a lot of area shutdown.
So, you didn't open them back up after dark at night?
Earlier, I think it's seven to three, I think, no, nine, I forget, seven or nine to three.
Close enough.
Yeah, they're, it's not, they're, they're working the day shift, right, it's nothing. There's one night shift, we talked, you remember that?
Right, I was, whatever they do.
One, one, one night.
Yeah, I'm going to break that into two spots. The first one is the, the request, so we can vote on that. I don't want to lose sight of the fact we've got to vote on this request. The request is for an exception to the use of the C D F trench backfill Dyton's winter moratorium. Recommendation from Highway Department Superintendent, Mr. Ferry.
Yes, to answer Pacheco's question, that C D F is what commonly known as global fill.
Yeah.
It solidifies similar to concrete, and would not, even in the summertime, would not be wise to disentangle it from a fight, because it can stand differently.
Yes, bad.
We, we used to, we entertained using that in the wintertime, because of the compactions, a little tougher to do. I did meet with this company, they're very proactive, and Woodward and Curran is also very proactive. They had to be on site to make sure the gravel was suitable and compacted right daily. Just one other note, that I believe the pay is every day, it's definitely every week, and then eve or every storm.
I'll work on that.
Yeah, yeah, it makes sense if it will long and more or less, at least during the end of the week, before the weekend.
All right.
Yes, I, I recommend waiving that C D F.
Now, that condition you placed, should that be entered into the record as well? In regards to the paving?
Yes, it's, it's in, it's in Operation Plan already.
It is.
Yes, story included, yes.
Are there any questions on this before I ask for a motion?
No.
I will entertain a motion to grant the request for an exception to the use of the C D F for trench backfill during the Town of Dyton's winter moratorium.
I'll make that motion.
Second.
Motion made in second, all those in favor? Mr. Pacheco?
Aye.
Mr. Karen?
An aye.
Chairman Hou is an aye. Now, in regards to this project, I think it's very important that the citizens of Main Street understand that this is a two-phased project, that the first phase will be the water main piece. Going along with that, I think it's already begun, that National Grid and Verizon will be moving poles, is that correct?
I don't, I don't know, that would be a question for, I believe, Tom, or my...
Mr. Ferry?
I don't know.
Is your project starting in some aspects at the same time as the Water District project?
Their project is going to start next week, or the week, early part of the week after. The poll, you need to have another poll here before the polls is finalized.
Okay.
The polls may start to get moved as early as early spring, yes.
Okay, because they've been out quite a bit marking and...
Yes, they, they remark...
Posting?
They remark the polls moved a lot to behind the sidewalk.
Yes.
But they have a major project that probably be done first in town before they actually attack Main Street, so the timing's going to be...
One of the things that I have noticed, communication with National Grid to the residents on Main Street has been nonexistent. We see stakes in our yard with lines, and we assume that those circles with a stake in it means a pole is going to be moved. However, National Grid or Verizon never sent word out to people letting them know.
Well, all their marks are on town property, they will be invited to the next public hearing. To have that public hearing, you have to create a plan for you to review and act on. So, we can't inform them without a plan, so the plan had to be created. So, it's a little premature, they're more than welcome to give me a call.
Okay.
And they've been invited to the last hearing, and I don't believe that too many people showed up.
Not many.
Okay, so, if you, if you remember the rules, ones that may have concerns, they're welcome to contact my office.
Okay, no, thank you. Secondly, there was a flag put on several properties that said Dyton Water District.
Mm-hmm.
A blue flag, what is that flag for?
Mark the curb box, we're starting some, some marking of the water infrastructure, so in general, when the contractor is going to start digging, he'll know that there's a service line coming up, and to be careful. So, we're marking the shut-offs for, we're, we're doing that, obviously, in phases, because if we did the whole thing, what's the point? Do it as they need. So, one of our employees is going out there flagging shut-offs on the, on the lot lines. Your water shut-off.
Now...
Individual house water shut-off.
Will the lawns be disrupted to the...
Yes.
Okay.
To the shut-off, because they're going to be getting brand-new curb boxes, shut-offs, to, to their property line. So, all of, all of the infrastructure from the road, from the water main, to the curb box, which, everyone knows what that is, that you shut off underground to your house, that'll all be brand-new. So, we're getting rid of that. From, from that point to the house, that's the homeowner's responsibility, that's all staying, but we are, all of our infrastructure will be brand-new.
Will you be returning the lawns to prior condition?
I mean...
Within reason?
Not this winter. But, yes.
So, they'll be coming back to seed and...
I, I, that'll be something that they'll do in the spring to summer, to, to the final, finalization of the project. I don't anticipate them putting any lume in right now, not right now, as in November, December, because it's useless, but they will come by and do it. Absolutely.
The next question that I have, at the conservation meeting the other night, there were, it was mentioned that six trees will be removed on Main Street. Will those homeowners be notified prior to?
Yes, that's, that's a process that's premature now, and that will be discussed as that, when National Grid gets further down with their committee process.
Because at the conservation, they were asked that specifically, and they couldn't give an answer.
Well, part of that is on private property, so we can't make National Grid buy the trees, that has to be negotiated with the property.
Okay, no, thank you.
We'll be sending notices out next week of our, and Tom's going to be working with me for a message board, and we're, we're going to be sending notices to the residents of Main Street about the project start date, and just some tidbits about the project, and they can obviously call us with any answer, any questions.
At the Water District meeting the other night, it was mentioned that there would be one night that they'd be working around the clock. Does that create a problem with any bylaws? Or any policies of the Town of Dyton?
Not that I'm aware of, Tom.
What was the reason for that?
It's, it's to minimize the disruption to the Elm Street water tank, for the daily, for the usage of that tank during the day. It was determined that if we worked at night, it would alleviate some of the demand usage, you know, the...
That's a very technical and tedious problem, yes. I believe your bylaw of noise ordinance, you have, and I believe these circumstances warrant...
The noise, it, it, it's, sort of, not the construction per se, it would come under the noise.
I can't tell you when that night will be yet, but there's one night. They anticipate one, it might not be a full night, it might...
Yeah, I'm assuming that's at Main and Elm?
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Well, we're all in this together, so I'm sure Mr. Ferry and...
So, that, that, Main and Elm, that must be like mega shit.
It's, yeah, like I said, I don't, I don't think they're going to, in my personal experience, saying, I, I don't think they're going to get that Father's Winter, but it would be fantastic, because then I'd be in short sleeves and wouldn't be wearing a coat, so I'd be happy if they did.
So, yeah, but we'll have time to work together to really get in front of it, so to speak, so.
You'll be starting on the Water Street side end, or the William Street?
William Street.
So, William Street heading down towards the river?
Yes.
To Water Street or Deuce's Corner?
When you say Deuce's, that's Pleasant Street, right?
Pleasant Street, correct.
That part of the project is somewhat up in the air right now, as far as, yes, we are determined to get to the corner store there, at the end of, the end of Main Street, per se, as I, to County.
County, yeah.
Sorry, to County Street, but we're hoping to get all the way to Pleasant. It's a little bit up in the air as far as timing. So, it wasn't a giant cost to get through. The, one of the obstacles was obviously the, the road, the state, and what the obligation would be to repair it and get through it. State can be a little finicky about their roads, which I understand. So, we bid that as an add-on, so I'm hoping we get all the way, because why, why do the whole thing and just end right, right there? So, I think that's a question, as we keep going along with the process, that the town needs to have with the Water District.
Thank you.
I would hope to keep going. It's a small cost, it's not, as far as the whole project goes, very small.
Mr. Ferry, has the Water District met all of the permitting requirements? I understand today there was a review by Stormwater.
Yes, I know Stormwater met with the company, so, like, the situation, they are all satisfied, Woodward and Curran still have the other committee, through conservation, we let it go.
Okay. Mr. Pacheco, any questions?
No, let's be fair, as though what you've asked was from William Street to County Street.
Just, yes, to start.
Any plans for further...
Any further plans, you, I mean, it's obviously been permitted and everything, but we phased it as an extra for the project. It was bid that way, in case we didn't get through that intersection, anything, but it was bid, so.
Question, Mr. Karen, no further questions? Thank you very much.
All right, thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Ferry? Thank you. Next on the agenda, announcements.
Public input.
Oh, I'm sorry, public input. Before I begin public input, I would just like to explain that we limit public comment to five minutes. We ask that if it's in regards to department business brought before this committee by a member of the Town of Dyton, employees of the Town of Dyton, that you schedule it on the agenda through Mr. Mullins' office. We also request that there be no disparaging remarks directed at employees of the Town of Dyton, or the use of profanity will not be tolerated, and it will be the chairman's prerogative to stop the conversation. With that being said, is there any public input? No public input, next will be announcements.
Announcements, on Saturday, October twenty-ninth, twenty-twenty-two, from ten A M to two P M, the Drug Enforcement Administration, E E A, will coordinate with the Dyton Police Department for a one-day collaborative prescription drug take-back initiative event to remove potentially dangerous controlled substances from homes. The Children's Library is hosting a preschool Halloween party on October thirty-first, from twelve-thirty to one-thirty P M. There'll be fun games, prizes for costumes, and trick-or-treating in Town Hall, drop-in, registration not required. And some of us will be dressing up that day, so when the kids come, they can take a look at us. The Town of Dyton Food Bank Distribution will be held next, on November nineteenth, twenty-twenty-two, located at the Town Hall, nine seventy-nine Somerset Avenue, lower level. And what's added to the announcements is the Lions Art Festival will be held Sunday, November sixth, twenty-twenty-two, at Aruto's Farm on William Street, from nine A M to three P M. And I want to make also in the announcements that the week of November seventh is Veterans Week. The Council on Aging and Veterans Service have teamed up for the Veterans Week. Any questions, call Council on Aging at five zero eight eight two three zero zero nine five, or councilonagent@dyton-ma.gov. Veterans Week will consist of Monday, on November seventh, at one P M, create a thank-you craft for your favorite veteran at Town Dyton Council on Aging, located at ten fifty-nine Somerset Avenue, supplies included, please RSVP by calling five zero eight eight two three zero zero nine five. Tuesday, November eighth, at ten fifteen, Patriotic Sing-Along with Dyton Rehobst Regional High School chorus members, Dyton Council on Aging, in primetime at ten fifty-nine Somerset Avenue, all are welcome. Wednesday, November ninth, at ten thirty A M, meet and greet with Veterans Service Officer Raymond Hague and local veterans. This will be held at Lincoln Village Community Center, three hundred Lincoln Avenue, refreshments will be served. Thursday, November tenth, at eight thirty A M, join our Veterans Breakfast, open to all with Dyton Council on Aging, primetime, and Veterans Service Officer Raymond Hague at ten fifty-nine Somerset Avenue. There will be a flag lowering, a ser... There will be a flag lowering ceremony to follow. Must RSVP by calling five zero eight, eight two three, zero zero nine five. Friday, Veterans' Day, November eleventh at eleven AM, Veterans' Day Ceremony to honor all who have served our country, hosted by the Veterans Service Department at Veterans' Memorial Park at nine seventy-nine Somerset Avenue. And on Saturday, November twelfth, from nine AM to eleven AM, the Veterans Service Department is hosting a Veterans' Breakfast for veterans located at the Father's House Family Church, now, uh, presently will be our future library, located at two zero seven Main Street, Dayton. That's all the announcements.
Thank you very much. Uh, next on the agenda is the Town Administrator's Report, uh, presentation, proposed special town meeting articles by Town Administrator Mike Mullins. I am going to ask that the presentation, or participation in the presentation be only with town employees. We will give the public an opportunity later in the meeting to ask questions if they have in regards to any of the prospective articles on the warrant.
So, thank you, Mr. Chairman, and members of the board. Just on a note of levity, I just wanna, I just wanna mention how excited I am for Halloween. Like, I did, I received, uh, from Amazon the other day, my Spider-Man costume, so I'll, I'll be ready, uh, for, for Town Heart Trick-or-Treating as well. But, um, so almost, 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 uh, almost, uh, two weeks ago now, as you know, the, uh, the Selectmen and the things I met jointly, uh, uh, to review, uh, the proposed warrant articles on, um, on the November first special town meeting. Um, I can work, I'm in, I'm in, I'm in, I'm in work to make joint recommendations on many, um, of the financial articles, and I just wanna, so, so run through, uh, um, so the proposed articles with help from the Fire Chief and the Chairman of Parks and Rec. I, uh, um, so, 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 yeah, so, yeah, sometimes reading, uh, so sometimes reading through the warrant, uh, there's like a lot of really legalese and like a lot of times the context and the background, oh, you know, like about a proposed warrant article really doesn't come through, uh, so like, so actually, actually beginning, uh, beginning with the special town meeting, I, 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 uh, beginning with the preparation, um, for the November first twenty-one special town meeting, we got, oh, you know, like in a routine and established a practice where we present an overview of what the articles really are, oh, you know, any background and what, oh, you know, like and why exact, uh, 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 so like, oh, and why exactly the articles are being proposed. So like, we want, uh, so we wanted to continue, so we wanted to continue that practice in hopes of informing everyone going, uh, into the November first, uh, twenty twenty-two special town meeting, uh, that, uh, that meeting will be taking place next Tuesday night at the Dayton Middle School, uh, like it is a change in location, uh, from like a typical, uh, D R high school location. Um, so like really the ability, uh, that we have, uh, geared to fund the financial articles actually comes, uh, uh, from like our FY twenty-three free cash certification. Alec, and I just want to, Alec, Alec, really, Alec, real, uh, really start by reviewing our trends in free cash, really, uh, like for the last five years, we've hovered, we've hovered out of free cash certification, Alec, of approx, of approximately one point, uh, one point seven million dollars that we went, Alec, we went over at the last meeting two weeks ago. Um, this year, uh, this year due, uh, to the one-time, the one-time E and D turnback excess in, uh, excess in deficiency payment, uh, that we receive, that we received from Dayton Rahobek, Dayton Rahobek Regional School District at the end of June, Alec, our free, uh, certified free cash, um, in FY twenty-three, as we discussed this year, Alec, we had a one-time increase, Alec, based on the one, uh, the almost one point three E and D, um, 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 turnback, that brought our FY twenty, uh, three certified free cash up, uh, to two point, uh, to two point nine nine million dollars, and that, Alec, really provides the ability to fund and to reserve a lot of, uh, what, Alec, is being proposed in the special town meeting warrant. Um, so, uh, um, so just, so just as an overview, the warrant, oh, yeah, the tenants of the warrant include a strong priority, include a strong priority on maintaining fiscal discipline, Alec, in operational, in operational sustainability to limit the tax, uh, to limit our taxpayer burden. Alec, we project at this point, uh, excess levy capacity, uh, for fiscal year twenty twenty-three, based on the proposed special town meeting warrant articles, uh, um, um, took him in right around eight hundred thousand dollars. Alec, 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 and we are proposing generally uses, Alec, uh, Alec, of the certified free cash that I just mentioned, uh, to fund, uh, to fund police station debt service, Alec, an additional funding to decrease the tax rate, uh, the FY twenty-three tax rate in the amount of five hundred and ninety-seven thousand, nine hundred and twenty-five dollars, which is, Alec, put, oh, yeah, which is pretty significant, uh, like we have proposed increases uh, to the stabilization and capital stabilization account balances, and we, Alec, in the warrant is proposing funding, Alec, for like a variety of, uh, for a variety of capital investments. So like in over the last month, these articles, um, have been shaped by department head input, uh, 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 the capital outlay, the Fin and Calm, the Board of Selectmen and Resident input together. So just, Alec, to actually starting with Article One, Alec, Article One is, Alec, very simple and straightforward, it is to hear reports from town officials. Um, I'm going to add a, I'm going to Article Two, Article Two, Alec proposes, proposes the payment, Alec, of, um, of unpaid fiscal year twenty-two, um, bills, um, and, Alec, it includes twenty-eight dollars and seventy-one cents and, um, uh, to fund it outstanding invoice from, uh, from Napa Auto Parts, um, and also, it also includes just over twenty-three, a hundred dollars, uh, to fund the purchase, um, of Nike, and both of those expenses were in the PD. Um, and also, it also includes, um, as a payment of unpaid bills, uh, from the town, uh, from the town reports budget, Alec, of just over, uh, eighteen hundred dollars for the, uh, for the twenty twenty-two town reports. Um, and Article Three, I just mentioned generally, uh, but Article Three, um, Alec, 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 Article Three proposes to make payment of the three hundred and sixty, three hundred and sixty-seven thousand dollars police station debt service using free cash, um, an additional two hundred and thirty thousand dollars to offset the tax rate, um, bringing the total up to just over, uh, five hundred and ninety-seven thousand dollars in funding that would be used to reduce, oh, yeah, the five hundred and ninety-seven thousand dollars would be used to reduce the amount, uh, that, uh, we, oh, you know, uh, that we have, sort of raise and appropriate, uh, um, uh, um, uh, but the, the fund to taxes. So like in essence, we're like actually decreasing, uh, so, yeah, like we're like lowering, so, yeah, like we're, so, yeah, like we're, so, yeah, so, yeah, we're decreasing, uh, you know, the prop, uh, the pro, uh, the property tax burden in FY twenty-three, uh, by a six hundred thousand dollars nearly. So any questions so far, Alec? I mean, I think that's really important for residents really to understand exactly what we're doing here, so.
Any questions? Article Four.
All right. Alec, 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 um, um, Article Four, we have, Alec, we, Alec, we have been, uh, we have been in a collective bargaining process, Alec, with, uh, with the Dayton Dispatches, uh, to fund, um, a collective bargaining agreement, uh, for the fiscal years of FY twenty-one, FY twenty-two, um, FY twenty-three. Alec concluded on, Alec concluded on the agenda that tonight is ratification of the MOU, Alec, with the, the union that, Alec, I'm very pleased and proud that we were able to reach, uh, you know, uh, uh, you know, due to our efforts over the last month and a half, Alec, and, Alec, um, and the agreement caused for base wage increases, Alec, of two percent, two percent, and two point five percent, Alec, Alec, uh, over three, over three fiscal years, it reforms vacation time and sick time buyback provisions, Alec, I'm in it, I'm in it, I'm in it, also clarifies progressive discipline language to be better in line with employment law. Uh, so that, Alec, is Article Four, and Alec, for, uh, so, um, so like for Article Five, I just want to ask the Fire Chief if he'd like to introduce it and.
Let's don't discuss it.
Chief McGee, thank you very much for coming this evening.
Thank you for having me. Good evening. Um, so Article Five, uh, proposes to fund a hundred and fifty thousand dollars for a feasibility study, um, to provide recommendations on modernizing Station One. Um, that will include funding of an architect and an onus project manager. Okay, Mike?
I can just hit the damn button. Sorry.
Um, so this is just some photos of some existing conditions currently in the station. Um, the photo on the far left is Engine Two, it's actually between Engine Two and A One in the apparatus bay. Um, you could see there's pretty significant, uh, cracks in the floor, um, which lead us to believe that there's something going on under the floor. Uh, the, the weight of the apparatus has changed over the years since the building was constructed in nineteen sixty, so that could have a significant difference too. Um, the, the middle picture is my, uh, administrative assistance office, so the desk you see there on the, the far left is, is her desk, and as you could see, there's a, uh, bed in, behind her desk, that this room doubles as a bunk room. Um, so Rebecca, uh, cannot keep any personal items, any paperwork, anything like that out on her desk, she has to put all her stuff away at night. Can you imagine doing that, Karen? She has to put all her stuff away at night, um, so that way the, the room can be utilized by staff at night as a bunk room, and then pull her stuff back out in the morning and, and, and continue her work. So that takes time and, and slows down what she can, the productivity for the day, if you will. Um, the photo on the far right is a picture of the firewall between, uh, the apparatus bay and the, the dayroom or the administrative side of the station. Um, if you look, it's hard to see in this photo, but if you look where the map is, there's a crack that runs all the, the whole height of the, the, that wall. That crack is in the CMU or the concrete masonry wall, and it actually goes through both sides, so that crack is on the apparatus bay side as well as on the dayroom side of the, the building. Again, it just, to us is, is signs, or to me, is signs of, um, some structural fatigue or something's going on with, uh, something under the building or, or whatever. You know, we know there's swampland behind the station, so is, is that affecting what's going on with, um, I won't say swampland, but wetland is probably more politically correct than that thing, but, um, you know, is that having some effect on, on what's going on with the building? Again, the picture on the left is, is Engine Two's, uh, apparatus bay, that's the same crack to the floor in the first one. Um, the picture in the middle on this one is our, uh, what we call our dayroom, so this is a, a multipurpose room, this is where the guys kind of chill out at night and watch TV and, and talk about calls and just kind of debrief the day. Uh, you could see there's some desks, uh, lieutenant's desk or the shift officer's desk is the front one, um, on, on that, that middle picture, there's a desk in the back that is, uh, now the EMS coordinator's desk. My office is in the far back, and you could see there's also another, um, Murphy bed for sleeping in that same room. So the, the hard part about this one is, is this is a station that's twenty-four seven, we still have call personnel response to the station. Uh, if you can imagine being a, um, person sleeping in that bed, have to get up to go for a call, and then come back and all your personal belongings are spread out on the bed, and everybody from that station on the fire department is now in kind of hanging around your personal belongings. Um, besides the fact that we currently employ two full-time female personnel, um, we're getting into not having private spaces. Personnel within the department do a great job of giving those, those employees the spaces they need, so they have private spaces, um, but it, this just, it, it's, it's a difficult situation for us to, to work with. Uh, the build, the, the room on the far right is the EMS room, uh, that's all our EMS supplies in the back room. This is, this is the very, very far end of the station. This, this room exits directly into the apparatus bay. You could see there's a bunk on the, uh, on the immediate lower left-hand corner of the picture, those are EMS supplies, they have a treadmill in there that they, they work out with in there, and then there's some EMS supplies in front of the, uh, treadmill that you just can't see because the picture's not big enough. Um, so this room had some moisture issues, still has moisture issues, we, we constantly run a dehumidifier in this space, um, we're constantly cleaning the walls to remediate, um, any, um, mold and rust buildup that happens on the walls from the, the ongoing moisture issues, um, again, because of what we believe is the proximity to the wetlands. So i- it's just, it's, it's, uh, an ongoing thing to just try to keep that room under control. So again, you know, Station One was built in the nineteen sixties, uh, the, the best date I could find on the plans I found were, was May of nineteen sixty, it was originally constructed as a call fire station, uh, it currently operates twenty-four seven with uh, three firefighter paramedics, uh, per shift, and it also still functions as a call station, so there's still call personnel that come back when requested, um, to, to respond to the station. Uh, it's built very close in proximity to wetlands, causing moisture issues throughout many of the areas in the building, as I said, in the back room, we have some similar issues, um, in Rebecca's office in the front room that we, we kind of, uh, mediate throughout the year. Uh, Station One is also built in a known flood plain for the, the Muddy Cove, and it is in the inundation zone for the, uh, Muddy Cove Pond Dam, should there be a catastrophic dam failure. So, uh, the personnel that we count on to protect us as a town, um, in these kind of situations are in the midst of the problem, if you will. There's a lot of shared spaces in this, in the station, the administrative assistance office doubling as a bunk room, uh, the supply closet in the back room that was originally when constructed was supposed to just be like a custodial closet, is now a bunk room and an EMS supply room, and then the dayroom serves as a bunk room, uh, with no privacy to the person that's sleeping in that room. Uh, Station One is still utilizing a cesspool that was installed when the building was constructed, um, appears to be operable, uh, but obviously if something were to happen, that would be something we're gonna have to look at a, as far as an expense to reconstruct, and an expense if we go to do something at the station, which is what the feasibility study will help us, um, determine. All the exterior walls of the station, um, are not insulated, so the CMU walls in the wintertime when we're heating, sweat like crazy because the outside is cold and that, that gets reflected through to the inside, so there's constant sweat and moisture problems on all the exterior walls. Uh, there's cracks in the floors that we indicated in the pictures that, uh, have us concerned that there may be any potential structural problems. A feasibility study, uh, would secure an architect again for the town to review existing conditions of Station One and per, perform some, uh, programmatic analysis and provide some schematic designs on what that, what the station might look like if we were to expand or renovate the station, uh, along with applicable costs to those renovations. Before, it would also include, uh, costs to look at, uh, to take some site explorations and surveys, to, uh, compare any identifiable options, so if, uh, you know, obviously the, the, the ultimate goal of the feasibility study is to look at Station One and, and say, give us a, give us a cost representative of what it would be to make Station One what it needs to be, but it this, it also includes looking at some other places maybe in town that we could do something new and just provide a cost analysis to that. Uh, the Fire Department has no preference, my. My department has no preference on, uh, I'll say it again, we have no preference on an expansion or renovation as opposed to a new structure. We, we only want to provide information to the taxpayers, um, on what the cost of all the options would be. There's no, no options, in our opinion, there's no options that are off of the table. So if, if the construction or the, I'm sorry, the onus project manager and the architect want to look at Station Two, that's completely on the table and, and we can, we can look at it all. Um, goal of the study would be to provide taxpayers with the most information as possible to make a, um, to make a, uh, well-rounded decision with, with valid, uh, construction costs or, or estimates provided by the, the study.
Chief, excellent presentation.
Yeah, that's good.
Um, did you have any further comments? I was gonna.
I don't. I, I will just say that, um, I invite the board, I invite the, the townspeople, if you ever want to come down to the station, I, I know Mr. Hall's come down, if you ever want to come down to the station and take a look around, but the doors are, I'll say always open. The doors are always open. Um, anybody in town, you want to come down, uh, I, I would just say Monday through Friday, even maybe on the weekends, nine to five, stop by, we're more than happy to give you a tour to, to, to just take a look at what's, what's going on. There's no secrets, it's not, um, this is all realistic pictures, the, the pictures that were taken, uh, this week. And, um, the other thing that, that we didn't include is, is we have a cold storage garage behind the station that houses our forestry one, that at this time of year we have to now take and move up to Station Two to be in a heated space so we don't freeze the pump and the tank and all that. So, uh, that eliminates our response to incidences, let's say, in the, uh, milchery pits and those types of, of places to waiting for that apparatus to come from Station Two to, to arrive to that scene. That's it.
Mr. Pacheco, any questions?
No questions. I just want to say that I support this feasibility study so that the residents and us can see what the best, best options are. I ha- I have no preference also, uh, but I want to see what the, uh, report gives us, so I think it's very important that the town members approve this.
I appreciate it.
Town residents.
Is the price for the feasibility study?
The price for the feasibility study? It, well, right now it's just a quote because we'd have to go to Altavide for it, but we got a quote from, um, Palmeroy who did, who's the onus project manager that did the police station that was a hundred and fifty thousand dollars for a quote. I did call this week to make sure that that was, because that quote was provided in twenty twenty-one when I first submitted the capital request, um, and that price is still good. I did talk to Palmeroy, so that's still a good price in today's day and age.
Yeah.
Um, but it would have to go Altavide.
Okay. All right, that's it, thank you.
Thank you. Few things. One, one of the things I didn't notice, but the public should also be aware, is that there are no shower facilities in that south fire station.
So there is, there is one, um, in the, in the forward, um, bathroom, uh, the, the one closest to the front of the station, there is a bathroom that's thirty inches, uh, it's, it's a thirty-inch shower, so if you can imagine, if you've shower, you all shower at home, um, thirty inches is, is basically a, a broom closet. It's, it's tough, it's got low ceilings, and we're always fixing the, again, because it's low ceilings, ventilation's not adequate with, we're cleaning mold off of the walls in the shower, but there is one shower facility.
I'd also like to thank your employees, your, your workers, for their loyalty to the town of Dyke. They've never come before us complaining about the conditions, but it's evident to many of us that they are working in a hardship-type environment. Um, with that being said, Mr. Pacheco, although there is no recommendation listed by the Capitol Outlay, so you are the representative of Capitol Outlay, where does this stand?
I, I don't have that before me, but this was rated, if my memory's correct, pretty high as a, a need for the town.
As, as a major priority of, of this community.
Yeah, the fire station or just?
The feasibility study. That's all we, that was before us.
And, and certainly some remodeling or some work to that station.
Sure.
To improve the working conditions for those men and women.
Yes.
No further questions? I thank you very much for.
Thank you for your time, I appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Momlin, Article Six.
So moving on to Art- Article Six, um, I like, um, Article Six proposes seventy-five thousand five hundred dollars to fund a fully-equipped police vehicle. Um, and, um, and funding a fully-equipped police vehicle, um, includes, uh, like, um, uh, basically, basically outfitting it with, uh, with a computer, with a firearm, with a radio antenna, uh, like, and related accessories. Uh, the cruises run daily, uh, with idle time and, um, and engine hours accumulating. Um, uh, the DPD, uh, together with our mechanic, Mark, always places a top priority on vehicle care and preventative maintenance. Uh, you know, uh, but a majority of our cruises have over a hundred thousand miles, uh, with a few, uh, act, I'm actually nearing the end of life. Um, uh, uh, one of the things when we actually came to special town meeting last year, the cost, um, uh, for a fully-equipped police vehicle was sixty-four thousand dollars. Uh, like, and the increase in cost here represent, like, I like, I like actually a fifteen percent increase in vehicle cost. Um, uh, you, uh, 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 based on, uh, based on auto supply issues, but also based, oh, you know, uh, you know, based on my, um, uh, based, uh, based on market factors as well. We, uh, you know, like, and added really two other challenge. We are a very small agency, like, and we're competing with bigger towns and state agencies for these vehicles. Uh, so like, really, and I want to thank Detective Ryan Richards and the chief, they, uh, you know, they like a really consist, so, yeah, they're always working at it to make sure that we, uh, you know, have a supply of vehicles available to us when we need it. Um, uh, the cost, uh, the, uh, the cost of lighting packages, uh, have also increased by twenty percent. Uh, like, in a facing market and supply chain issues, uh, like, uh, like, as we talked about two weeks ago, the lead time to deliver, uh, like, a fully-equipped police vehicle is one year. Uh, like, uh, like, um, I'm at the November twenty, at the November twenty-twenty-one special town meeting, the town meeting, uh, the, uh, um, 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 town meeting approved then, uh, like, uh, uh, like, actually funding a fully-equipped police vehicle, and we still haven't received it yet. Um, so like, when, hopefully, hopefully, we're gonna get that by the end of the year. Uh, like, and that will, uh, like, and that will allow us to help retire, uh, like, uh, uh, actually, one of the vehicles that we have with approximately a hundred and sixty thousand miles on it, uh, but, uh, but we have, uh, but we have at least two or three more as well. Um, the, um, and also, like, as, um, as the chief mentioned two weeks ago, uh, recent water pump issues with the explorers, uh, like, and, uh, like, and other intermittent, uh, like, and other intermittent issues require, uh, like, uh, like, have especially over the last year have, uh, you know, have real, um, have, uh, like, have really forced regular dealership attention, uh, which has, uh, uh, which has, uh, which has also impacted our, uh, you know, like, our ability to always have an active fleet. Um, so that is Article Six. Um, uh, uh, we do have the Chair of Parks and Rec here. I will try to like move this up a little bit so he doesn't have to sprint like I did in reading, um, the overview for Article Six.
Mr. Smith?
Good evening, everyone.
Thank you, good evening.
To be fair, I got duped. Mike told me to come, I should really be here tonight because I was getting an award. He didn't tell me.
I want to thank you for taking time from your busy day to come before us to speak on this project.
So not a, not a problem. So Article Seven, um, Parks and Recreation is requesting thirty thousand dollars to install a new asphalt parking lot at the, um, tennis basketball court facilities at fifteen fifty-one Somerset Avenue. Um, I can't even read my book.
You wanna, uh, can I give you this?
Yeah, thank you. I don't have it completely memorized. Um, so the funding would, uh, be the grinding and removal of the existing failed asphalt surface, um, which you can see depicted here. Um, and it would allow for the installation of a new hundred and seventy-five foot long by forty foot wide asphalt parking lot surface. Um, it eliminates the existing safety hazards and lack of ADA compliance due to the existing surface conditions in grade. Uh, it will create accessible parking to tie into the ADA accessible walkway created through the MOD grant that we had, um, worked on this summer. Um, it's gonna establish handicap parking spaces and just overall smooth parking spaces to access both the courts and the picnic area, um, in the back left corner of the property. Um, we're also gonna establish a single entry and exit to Route, um, one thirty-eight. There's a kind of a strange situation happening there with the existing guardrail from when it was, you know, the shared police department and the courts. Think it was encouraged to pull into the courts right tight to where the courts are and the police department on the other end. We're still gonna leave access because the highway department utilizes that building, but make it so it's a more definitive entry and exit because there's kind of two spots where two people pulling out at the same time, it causes a real, um, bad kind of blind spot situation, so we're gonna, um, reconfigure the guardrail situation with the paving project. Um, and I just want to note that the, the facility, uh, out of all the Parks and Rec facilities that we, um, oversee, it's, it's clearly, it's the most widely used by, you know, um, members of the community. The pickleball courts are, and, and tennis courts are full pretty much every night of the week when the weather's nice. Um, on the weekends, there's, there's always, uh, you know, quite a large group of, of, of the youth, um, using the basketball courts, and then also, I totally forgot about it, but Sunday mornings, there's, I think that, that hockey group has been going to those courts for at least ten years, because I remember talking to John Brunidge when they first, uh, when I first came on, um, because they, they needed a couple of things to keep themselves going over there, but it is, you know, far and above our most utilized, um, um, facility, and I think it's important, um, because of its use to create, you know, a safe parking situation for everyone that does use it, um, even beyond the accessibility, the accessibility portion of it. It's just, it overall, it needs to be addressed.
Mr. Pacheco, do you?
Do you have, yeah, so actually two, so we did, I did send, um, administrator Malon some pictures. So you can, what you can see here is there is, um, what was the old police station parking area, and then it's, you know, some recycled, um, millings that were kind of used over the years to infill, um, the section between what was an actual established parking surface at one point to the courts themselves, the significant, um, potholes, um, throughout it. Oops, sorry, Mike, that's all I got, is the two. The two there. And now you can kind of see, so when you're looking at this, the picture on the left, too, also where you kind of see the two trees in the far back, that's, there's actually a nice little picnic area that was, uh, created by the, um, Lions and donated by the Lions Club, um, some years ago, and it is a nice spot to go sit, um, have lunch, or just read a book. So that's another part of this was we wanted to establish, um, full parking to that back area as well, because that's, right now, that's just a kind of a mix of recycled materials that are compacted in some stone dust, so.
Mr. Pacheco, any questions?
No questions.
Mr. Karen?
I still think thirty thousand dollars is a lot of money for what you're going to get out of it. I mean, it, it's, it's not that bad.
All right, so I, I.
The company has used it for years.
So I actually, I've personally seen this two gentlemen that I've seen, I wouldn't say regularly, they're not there every week, but I've seen there on several different occasions, who are wheelchair users, um, that were using it prior to even the MOD grant, work that was done on the walkways. And I, you know, just shooting the breeze with them, asked them, uh, what can we do better for you? They're like, oh, well, you know, this isn't great. They're like, we can traverse it, but it's not easy. Um, I, they're very able for persons with disabilities, obviously, because they're playing, you know, tennis. Um, but that's why we thought it was important when we were writing the MOD grant to create the walkway that we did with the hopes that we would also expand the paving. Um, from a personal perspective, if I wanted, so my daughter is a, is a full-time wheelchair user, she couldn't traverse this parking lot.
No question.
Not to give you like, you know, and I'm not trying to turn this into a sob story, it's just the reality of somebody who doesn't have, you know, the overall ability to navigate a condition like this. We ran into a similar situation with the, with the middle school this year, where the middle school entryway was deteriorated. It's unsafe for people with or without disabilities. Um, you know, you and I can walk, would walk on this any day of the week and not even give it a second thought until you were using a mobility issue, or even some, some of the folks that do play pickleball are, you know, of an older age, too, where, I mean, they get along well enough to play pickleball, but some of them are, you know, slowly working their way in there just to get outside, and it, 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 it is an overall safety concern of mine. Um, it's definitely, I, I didn't write this article, or I should say, we didn't write this article, um, you know, it's something that Parks and Recs wanted, I think it's something that, you know, the town needed. And it's even, uh, most of the, um, requests have come from the folks who are playing pickleball. They've reached out on several different occasions just stating, you know, that, one, kind of the layout causes a funky si- situation with that entry and exit, too, because if you're coming in from Route one thirty-eight, that section that you see that is kind of not actual asphalt, it looks like that's the recycled, um, material, it, you're kind of encouraged to pull into there. So they start parking there and they're walking across to get to the courts and, you know, traffic's coming into or out of the facility. Um, so they've reached out on several different occasions, um, to address their concerns with the parking situation. Like typically what we do is, or what we've been doing is encourage them to park closer so that you can't pull in there, but, um, I wouldn't, that, I wouldn't call that a real solution, still certainly has its challenges and could cause issues.
Mr. Karen, any further? Actually, a few things. First of all, I had the opportunity to attend a Park and Recreation Committee meeting that was held at this very location, and I was amazed by the turnout. Over twenty-five people came to express two things, their concerns and also what they would like to see happen. As Mr. Smith has mentioned earlier, there's great use for this facility, but the pickleball people wanted to expand their league to a youth division. The men's league wanted to expand their league as well. So there's certainly a desire by the public to use this facility, and with that comes wear and tear on that parking lot. But as I look at the parking lot, if you take a look at the first picture with the white station wagon and the fence photo, you'll notice that there is a slight incline in the parking lot, and with that incline, there is also an erosion mark because you have a high area coming into a lower area, which indicates to me that you have a potential drainage, drainage problem, but in addition, you have an erosion problem. And as a result of that, it is going to take some fill to, to remediate that, or that will happen again. Your, your blacktop will wear away quite easily. I don't, I didn't hear anything from Mr. Gale in regarding his ADA compliance concerns, and when we go to town meeting, I would strongly encourage that on the town floor, or maybe the moderator will allow for Mr. Gale to speak specifically of his ADA concerns. But I do question whether or not that the gates allowing access to the fields are ADA compliant. Um, please, the fencing, correct me if I'm wrong, was put in before Mr. Gale?
The fencing was done when the project was done, which I believe was two thousand and ten, I think, when was when that.
Two thousand and ten, so that was, so that was before Mr. Gale.
Yes, well, before Mr. Gale.
And before there was an actual ADA review of that facility.
Correct. Well, no, there, eh, there wasn't ADA review of that facility dur- with the KMA report, which was done the year prior to the MOD grant. So there's essentially, that's what we did is, the MOD grant was driven by the KMA report, which is a town-wide audit of both interior and exterior spaces. So I have, if there are any ADA compliant issues with gates or anything else at this facility, I have that in a report. Um, I think I've established myself to be cognitive and, and proactive in repairing ADA issues throughout Parks and Rec. Um, I can tell you right off the top of my head, so the gate openings need to be three feet, um, they. I can tell you right off the top of my head, so the gate openings need to be three feet. They, they, I believe the personal entry gates are three feet there and then there's also equipment entry gates. They are missing kick plates, which are needed to operate, you know, using a wheelchair, but that's a pretty simple fix. And just like anything else, I'll use the North Dayton Playground as a, as an example. We're always prepared to supplement and make a project happen, whether it be utilizing contributions, you know, work-related contributions from the highway department if they're able and willing to help us, and also using the Parks and Recs budget to bring the whole facility up to compliance.
Mr. Mellon, is it permissible at town meeting for addendums to be provided for the voters that list the ADA concerns that are listed here this evening as well as?
Well, I certainly think that we could make, when we could make the motion with the stipulation that ADA compliance is met in the parking surface. I think when you're talking about the fencing issues, that that's just the due diligence of Parks and Rec to address those issues.
No, thank you. So that wouldn't be part of the specific request?
No, just this request would strictly be the thirty thousand to install the asphalt parking lot. But I'd be happy that when making the motion to add the stipulation that, under the discretion of the ADA coordinator, that all, all requirements are met. I do know the requirements as being part of the Commission on Disability. I have conversations regularly with Mr. Gale on, you know, projects like this. But we can make it a stipulation in the warrant article. I'm perfectly okay with that. And then it's also, like I said, it's just the due diligence of Parks and Rec to address any of this. So I think the only other two issues that I can think of, and it's things that are on our, on our list is with adjusting the KMA report, is things like the kick plates on the fences. And then also, once we do have, if we, if we do have established parking to the picnic areas, part of the MOD grant was the purchase of those rubber grass mats, which we utilized at the playground. So that, because we do have a handicap accessible picnic table there, but it's in stone dust, so it's not on a handicap accessible surface. So we have items like that to contribute to the existing facility to, you know, bring it up to compliance.
Getting back to the grading, you came up with a number of thirty thousand dollars and I'm sure you just didn't pick that out of nowhere.
Didn't I?
Was there any consideration given to this grading issue that I'm noting?
Yeah, so it's actually, I would disregard the grading that you're seeing visually, especially in a picture. It's relatively flat. There is gonna be a certain percentage of grade for drainage, which will be addressed. Anything that, when we're talking about a paving project or any type of, you know, earth-moving projects, I always work hand-in-hand with Mr. Ferry to make sure that we're doing what we need to do to make, for the project to come out right. They're gonna, when they grind down the existing surface, that's gonna dramatically change what you're seeing there anyway. And then when they do lay the new asphalt, it's obviously gonna be pitched correctly, thicker in some spots or others, so it is a level surface. As far as the figure, the figure comes from my capital request that I put in for actually three parking lots during last year's capital outlay meetings. We did have a warrant article at annual town meeting for ninety thousand dollars to do those three, and then we, you know, due to the fiscal situation of the town at the time, not knowing where our free cash was gonna be, we chose not to, you know, motion that that article be voted on, so that we could put ourselves in a position to see if, if some funding was available. And, but this, and I think that parking needs to be addressed at the three facilities that I originally presented to capital outlay. But this is, because this is the most widely used, we picked the one that we thought was gonna be the most important and would have the biggest impact on the community.
Thank you. And it's also my understanding that the North Dayton Playground came in under budget and that you, the commission chose to return the mon, the extra money to the town rather than spend it to the last penny.
So, well, what, what happens in that situation, so also because of my involvement with CPC, is anytime that CPC funding is given for a project, what we'll do is, once we're a hundred percent completed, because there's a couple little odds and ends at North Dayton, we're still in the neighborhood of ten thousand dollars under budget. What we'll do is, once we know that we're a hundred percent complete, all the bills have been paid, everything's closed out, that will become, and the same thing goes for the ball field fencing and lighting, which is an older CPC article. What we'll do is, that will actually go back to the CPC committee, once those projects are completed. And we'll create a warrant article for annual town meeting of next year and ask that those funds get returned to the accounts that they were allocated from.
If you should be under, should come in under budget, you would do the same to the town, return the free cash?
Absolutely. I think, I think Parks and Rec has shown, you know, its due diligence in, in being fiscally responsible with all our projects that we do. Same with the fencing and lighting, I've worked with town administrator Mullin to write an invitation for bid to get, you know, what we thought was a very, very reasonable and pricing done for that fencing. And then we, we ended up exploring, using Bristol Plymouth for the lighting. So it's any way that we can find a way to not use all of the money that's given to us. We're always gonna, especially myself personally, I'm always gonna explore that, that option.
Thank you. Unless there are any further questions? Mr. Smith, thank you very much for coming before us this evening.
Have a good night.
Good night. Article eight.
Article eight. So Article eight, is an article proposed by the Dayton Highway Department relative to Hart Street Drainage Improvements. And includes proposed drainage improvements in the, and specifically the area of 554 and 640 Hart Street. The area currently has no erosion controls or water treatments in place. The area also involves a, a ventil pool and additional downstream wetlands that we want to protect. And the drainage that is, the drainage that is proposed would be installed to follow best management practices, BMPs, for adequate drainage processes. And this, and this is a fifteen thousand dollar, and this is a proposed fifteen thousand dollar article.
Any questions in regards to this? I do have one. Some water and conservation, have they given a recommendation in regards to this project?
The, of this project, there are, there are a lot, there are a lot of underlying issues with this project. And Alec and I have, Alec and I, Alec and I, and I've talked, and I have talked, and I've talked significantly with Highway Superintendent Ferry about those issues. And, oh, you know, like it's, yeah, like, and it's his recommendation that there are underlying drainage issues there that need to be addressed.
And when he addresses the public at the meeting, he will talk about those issues?
Yes, exactly. Yeah. But that's why we've wanted to really highlight what those issues here as well. So everyone has a better idea of what they are as well.
Thank you.
That's Article eight. Article nine is a proposed article from the Highway Department as well, that proposes the purchase of one light, a one, one, sorry, a one light duty dump truck with a snowplow. Alec, in what, Alec, Alec, in what the Highway Superintendent specifically has specked out is a 2022 Chevy Silverado R5500 HD four-wheel drive, which would replace a, a 2005 Ford pickup, which was recently taken out of service for a lot and sold at a recent auction. The vehicle would be, the vehicle would be equipped with a snowplow and morning lights. Alec, and the purchase would also includes a five-year, hundred thousand mile powertrain warranty. I didn't say that as quick as the commercials, but I think you got the intent.
Thank you. Are there any questions? Okay, Article ten.
Alec, 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 Article ten proposes, and I will like, so I will actually update the PowerPoint to include the cost as well. That is one thing like I'm realizing Alec is missing from a lot of these slides. But Article, but Article ten proposes a town hall walkway railing and stairway system in the amount of seventy-five thousand dollars. The proposed town hall walkway and stairway system would supplement already completed grant funded ramp demolition and walkway accessibility improvement, which removed long-time access, which removed long-time accessibility barriers to town hall's main level. The rock, the railing system specifically would include a hundred and seventy-five foot of prime, of prime and painted a steel, yeah, railing system. Alec, and there would all, I mean, there would also be constructed a concrete stairway that, that would provided, that would provide an additional connection point to the walkway from the upper level town hall parking lot.
Any questions? Article eleven.
Do we need the walk, I mean, the stairwell stairs?
There have been some people who expressed a desire of coming up the stairs rather than going all the way through the building to get to the second floor.
So in also, so like, so yeah, like, so like in also, so in, so in, so in also residents who want oh, yeah, like a quicker means of access to the pathway itself or the walkway itself without a ha, a having to walk the accessible, like a hundred and seventy-five foot new walkway. So yeah, like, so like, we can like streamline traffic for those who are able into town hall as well. Like, we have had, oh, you know, like a host of feedback on that. And we regularly have people like walk up the new so-called hill and, and I would, and I would probably bet money by next summer there's, so yeah, so yeah, there will be a one pathway there inherently.
I know I use, when I leave the town hall or go into town hall, sometimes I, I go, will soon be, hopefully, a stairway. But it's just, it's just so much easier sometimes. I cheat, yeah. Grass is getting a little high and it was wet, but that's today.
Yeah, like, I'm actually very thrilled with the way the grass has come in. It's been a labor of love for the Highway Department. You know, like, and the height that they're mowing is higher, like in order really to grow the grass and make sure it has a foundation. But I'm actually jealous of how the lawn looks there. Alec, I'm a lawn lover and I'm very jealous. But anyways, I digress.
It's also a labor of love of the town administrator who throughout the summer went out and moved the hose around to cover different areas of watering.
Yeah, that didn't get good reviews on social media, so I'll kind of leave that alone. So Article eleven proposes thirteen thousand dollars for, like, a proposed transfer station point-of-sale system. Alec, Alec, in the thirteen thousand dollars that would fund the point-of-sale system would fund a complete overhaul to the very, to the very outdated paper and labor-driven transfer sys, transfer station payment processing system. This, this would also complement ongoing efforts, ongoing efforts which are being made by the, by the treasurer collected to allow credit, Alec, and debit card payment options as well. But it also importantly allows the town to assess real-time reporting relative to transfer station volume and reporting efforts. Moving on, Article twelve, Article twelve proposes two hundred and sixty-seven thousand dollars for Pleasant Street Bridge at Muddy Cove final design engineering and permitting. As we know, the a hundred and seven-year-old Pleasant Street Bridge at Muddy Cove is listed like as a vulnerable area and area of concern in terms, in terms of coastal flooding that was identified Alec in, Alec in, Alec in, as a, in a hazard mitigation plan, a municipality, like a municipal vulnerability plan, like as long as the regional MVP plans for Somerset, Dayton and Swansea. The bridge currently has a weight posting for less than half of the legal statutory vehicle load, like which presents a significant hurdle in public safety access across Pleasant Street. The average, the average traffic volume, like along Pleasant Street is recorded at approximately thirteen hundred vehicles a day. Last year in November twenty-one, a town meeting, a town meeting approved initial up to twenty-five percent engineering design and the cost, which was recently completed earlier this month. The proposed article would fund the final engineering design, Alec, as well as required permitting, which includes permitting through the Dayton Council, through Mass DEP, the Chapter ninety-one license and water quality certification. The MEPA process, which is a very intensive process through the NF form, the environmental notification form, through the Army Corps of Engineers, we would need a general, we would need a general permit for the bridge, for the bridge reconstruction from the Army Corps, as well like as, as well as a, Alec, as well as, as well as a Mass dot chapter eighty-five, chapter eighty-five review as well. Are the town, are the town in order to fund the bridge reconstruction would rely on state and federal grants to make the construction funding a reality? But funding for the final engineering design and permitting would truly make the project shovel-ready and improve the town's chances of securing such funding.
Are there any questions?
Article thirteen includes or proposes a five thousand dollar transfer from the municipal waterways revenue account into the Harbor Master, into the Harbor Master Department to budget. Alec, you know, they mentioned that this is just like a simple revenue to budget transfer. But that would fund required maintenance to the town patrol boat. Any questions?
Any questions? Thank you.
So yeah, like, so yes, Article fourteen relates to a nine, a ninety thousand dollar transfer from free cash Alec into the town of Dayton's OPEB trust fund. Alec, and OPEB stands for the other post-employee, other post-employment benefit. The town's independent auditors, Roselle, Clark and Associates, recommend that the town of Dayton fund its OPEB trust at an amount of at least a hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars each year to fund unfunded liability for retire, or for retire re-health care and life insurance benefits. The proposed funding in Article fourteen seeks, seeks to continue the town's commitment of fulfilling this obligation, which, which also in turn continues to strengthen the town's, the town of Dayton's financial position. Of the, of the one hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars in recommended funding, a ninety thousand dollars would, Alec, would be funded through this article from a transfer from free cash with the remaining thirty-five thousand already funded in the town's operating budget.
Article fifteen.
Yeah, like, so yeah, Article fifteen is a very good article and I really want to thank the, the Trails Group for their efforts, so really for their efforts to make this possible. The proposed article proposes, proposes that town meeting rescind the vote taken relative to Article eleven of the November twenty-one the November twenty, twenty-one special town meeting. At that meeting, forty thousand dollars was approved for a Trails Committee feasibility study that, that has since been funded, Alec, from a grant from the Taunton, from the Taunton, from the Taunton River, Taunton River Stewardship Council, thereby taking away the need of local funding. So the funding would, so the funding would revert back to the unappropriated fund balance, which Alec, in essence, goes back into next year's, which in essence will go back into next year's free cash certification unless otherwise re-appropriated.
Questions?
Just a comment that the Trails Committee, after this was appropriated last year,
Yes.
found out that there was a grant available to fund this, they applied for it, they got it. So that's a good reason why we're getting the money back to the town, so.
Yeah, really, really is.
To the Trails Committee.
Thank you. Article sixteen, six hundred and fifty thousand deposit.
Uh, yes, uh, like, article, so, so, uh, so Article sixteen proposes a six-hundred-and-fifty-thousand-dollar deposit into, uh, like, into the town's, like, capital stabilization, uh, into the co- town's capital stabilization account. Uh, the, uh, the capital stabilization fund balance currently stands eight-hundred-and-thirty-seven, uh, like, eight-hundred, oh my God, I have to go back to elementary school, eight-hundred-and-thirty-seven-thousand-four-hundred-and-fifty-seven dollars and thirteen cents. Uh, the balance with, uh, the, the six-hundred-and-fifty-thousand-dollar deposit into the account would bring, uh, would increase the balance in the fund, uh, to nearly one-point-five-million dollars. Uh, the, uh, the capital stabilization account, uh, is an important, is an important dedicated funding source, uh, uh, but to fund planned capital needs. Uh, can, uh, can any funds in the future, uh, that would, that would be proposed to be transferred out of, uh, 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 but like, uh, but like, from the fund would always require a two-thirds for the town meeting.
I just want to add to this that it's been the Finance Committee and the Board of a Selectment over the last couple of years to earmark money to increase the capital stabilization account with a goal of at least ten percent of, of our operating budget. So with that in mind, this is saving money for certainly needed capital projects coming down the road.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Article, uh, like, article, uh, like, Article, uh, Article seventeen of the warrant, uh, like, also proposes a four, um, also proposes a four-hundred-and-twenty-five-thousand-dollar deposit into the general stabilization account, uh, the fund, uh, like, of which the fund balance currently stands, uh, like, at just shy of one-point-five-million dollars, uh, which would, uh, which would bring the balance, um, to just over one-point-nine-million dollars. Uh, the recommended best practice, uh, the recommended best practice is to build stabilization account balance, uh, to ten percent of the operating budget, uh, uh, like, in that, uh, like, in any funds in the future that would ever be proposed, uh, to be taken out of the, of the stabilization fund would always require a two-thirds for the town meeting. That is Article seventeen.
Article eighteen?
Article, uh, like, uh, like, Article eighteen is the proposed elected-appointed board and the committee stipend bylaw amendment. Uh, like, in what, uh, like, in what, uh, like, in what the proposed bylaw would do would be to follow through on, uh, 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 would be to follow through on a commitment, um, from the Selectment made in the spring, uh, to propose a stipend structure, uh, before applicable elected board and committee members. Uh, like, it proposes, uh, 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 it propos- uh, uh, it proposes to enshrine, uh, yeah, like, a stipend-setting structure while responsibly ensuring fiscal responsibility and budget sustainability. Uh, like, uh, uh, like, uh, uh, like, uh, like, it also encourage, it also encourages continuity and resident engagement on Dayton's elected and appointed boards and committees. Any questions on that?
Article nineteen?
Article, uh, like, uh, like, uh, like, uh, like, Article nineteen is a proposed re- uh, is a proposed, is a proposed re- is a proposed restatement of the Bristol Plymouth Regional Vocational Technical School District Agreement, uh, that would allow, uh, that would allow the, that would allow the town of Free Town into the district, but at the same time make really timely changes. Uh, like, uh, like, in the agreement, uh, you know, to, uh, you know, to reflect twenty-twenty, twenty-twenty-two needs and issues, like, I mean, it would make language, uh, consistent through the document, uh, like, district school to school district, uh, like, it would change, uh, vocational regional to, uh, regional vocational, uh, like, it would actually, like, uh, uh, it would actually update the agreement to recognize changes in statute and in the law. Uh, um, uh, as I mentioned, it would allow Free Town to join the district, but it would also remove Lakeville and Seekonk as members. Uh, they were allowed, uh, both Seekonk and Lakeville were permitted to join the district under the establishment of the regional school district. However, to date, uh, they have cho- uh, they have to- they've chosen not to join, so that would take them out of the equation. And, um, and, uh, like, it, uh, like, it also includes updates, uh, uh, your two-assessments, calculation costs, uh, like, it, I would also, like, allow, as I mentioned, Free Town to the district, and also, uh, like, in als- and also Section Nine include updates, uh, to the withdrawal section. We did reach out to BP today, and they will be at the special town meeting to explain this. So, like, we wanted, uh, so, yeah, to make sure, like, oh, you know, like, any questions or concerns that any of our residents had, so, yeah, we had, so, yeah, we had a representative, yeah, we had a representative from BP there to answer them.
And one of the questions that I asked at the open house that the superintendent wasn't able to, to answer, just so the public knows, that they're still working on what impact the addition of Free Town will have on the allotment, the town of Dayton and all the communities that are part of that will have to pay towards the new school project. Obviously, there's an additional school, so Free Town at some point will be contributing something. I'm just not sure what, and at this time, they hadn't determined that either.
So, yeah, like, and it also has the potential, oh, you know, really to change every year based on enrollment as well, uh, which is, yeah, like, a little bit of a wild card as well.
Yeah, thank you.
Um, I just want to log back into Zoom because Zoom ended because of inactivity.
Oh.
So I must be extremely fascinating with this presentation. Um, sorry about that. Um, okay, uh, so that is Article nineteen. Any questions on nineteen?
Yep.
Article twenty.
Article, um, Article twenty simply proposes, oh, you know, really to enshrine how we amend the town of Dayton general bylaws. This, uh, very important article, it's really a house, uh, like, uh, uh, so it's really a housekeeping article proposed by the town clerk, um, but, I mean, uh, so, 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 uh, so, like, as we have, like, in this warrant, new bylaws are often introduced and proposed on town meeting floor, uh, like, uh, uh, you know, like, actually as an unnumbered general bylaw. Uh, the new bylaw would, uh, the new bylaw amendment would specifically allow the town clerk to assign these, uh, to assign these new bylaws if approved a number. Uh, like, all, like, also, from time to time, it would make sense to review the arrangement of bylaws in terms of the, uh, 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 yeah, like, in terms of, like, the order and the numerical order of bylaws as well, uh, like, uh, like, in the bylaw amendment being proposed by the town clerk would give him the ability to do so. Uh, like, we currently have some unnumbered bylaws, uh, like, in our listing of approved bylaws, and they don't have a number because no one specifically, so, like, under our bylaws has, so, ha- so, so, yeah, like, currently has, uh, uh, so currently has the ability to, oh, yeah, provide, um, numbers in the first place, so the town clerk is looking to clean that up.
Now, he will clean it up, or will he have the ability to farm it up?
He will clean it up under this, under this bylaw, yes.
Yep. Any further questions?
No.
Article twenty-one.
The, um, Article, Article, so, so, the Article twenty, uh, Article twenty-one, uh, simply allows the town to apply, uh, the cu- uh, the cu- uh, the cost of living adjustment, um, um, uh, um, to blind pu- uh, to blind persons and surviving spouses, um, and, uh, this is a really routine, oh, you know, really, like, cola-driven article that we propose fairly regularly. So, like, and we just want really to make sure that blind, uh, that blind persons, uh, yeah, that blind persons and surviving spouses have, so, uh, so, uh, so have the ability, um, to receive a cost of living adjustment on their real estate taxes assumption.
Are there any questions regarding Article twenty-one? Article twenty-two?
Uh, like, uh, like, Article, um, uh, Article twenty-two, uh, would, uh, like, would up, uh, like, would update, um, uh, would up, uh, would, I would update what is, uh, what, uh, what is currently Section forty-six-hundred, uh, in the town of Dayton zoning bylaws, the ground-mounted solar photovoltaic installations, uh, like, and actually, like, replace that with a new section called solar generating facilities. Uh, like, and the changes from the previous Section forty-six-hundred include important, uh, 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 like, important and necessary battery energy, uh, 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 but, uh, but storage facilities in Section, um, um, of forty-six fifty-nine, uh, uh, that without the bylaw update will continue to be installed without any protections. And the protect- uh, the protections to residents for, uh, the protections to residents for battery energy storage facilities in the proposed updated bylaw include, um, more stringent safety and environmental standards, uh, to include developing an emergency response plan with local emergency services, uh, like, they, uh, uh, the, uh, they would require new monitoring, maintenance, and reporting requirements. Uh, the updated byl- the updated bylaw would include minimum fire department access to a municipal water supply. Uh, the bylaw would all, uh, the bylaw would als- the bylaw would also include a buffer of battery assemblies not less than two-hundred feet from any property line and a minimum of a hundred feet from the tree line and vegetative buffer. Um, and...
Any questions? Um, you have?
So, yeah, like, there's, uh, yeah, like, the, uh, the pl- are the planning, are the planning board on page, the, uh, the planning board on page thirty-two as well wanted, uh, you to update the public as well, like, and this will all be on our social media and website as well. Uh, but, um, um, but, uh, uh, but, uh, uh, but as we know, um, there was a proposed rewrite of the solar bylaw at the junior annual town meeting, uh, that was actually, so, yeah, that was actually tabled to the special. And, uh, like, in hearing all the feedback from, uh, the, uh, the en- uh, the annual, uh, from the annual town meeting, the planning board has really taken all that feedback under the con- oh, you know, into their thought and consideration, and has proposed updating our new, uh, uh, like, and has proposed updating our new solar bylaw with the input of, uh, like, all the feedback from the annual town meeting as well.
Now, this is amendments to Article twenty-two? So this will all be voted as one article?
Oh, yes.
Okay.
Uh, yeah, no, like, absolutely. Uh, like, uh, uh, um, Section forty-six-hundred was, uh, completely rewritten into an updated solar bylaw that's way more, uh, like, oh, you know, like, all-encompassing with way more protections for the town, its safety, and its residents.
Thank you. Are there any questions? Article twenty-two?
No.
Article twenty-three?
Uh, like, uh, um, Article twenty-three proposes the roadway acceptances, uh, of the roads included in Stony Ridge, um, uh, which include Galway Drive, Waterford Circle, like, in Kerry Lane roadway acceptances, um, uh, um, the, uh, the proposed roadway, the proposed roadway acceptance for this neighborhood is located off of Pount, uh, like, off of Pine Street, uh, like, in, uh, like, in the planning board vote, uh, voted to approve this bylaw, uh, on the fifth of October of this month.
Are there any questions? And Article twenty-four, any other business?
So here we ask if, uh, like, if, uh, like, if anyone has any other town business, uh, usually we hope the answer is no, and then we conclude town meeting.
I just have one, it's more of a housekeeping.
Yes.
Request. We will have in our packet at the town meeting who will be making the proposals.
Yes, absolutely.
Who will be presenting, whether it be Planning Board, or...
Yep.
Or Tom Ferry, or Nancy Gulata.
Yes, absolutely, yep.
Thank you.
All right, well, thank you, everyone.
You're small and excellent job.
Great job.
Thank you.
I think we longed for what it had, so I apologize.
No. Uh, any old business? With that being said, we will enter into Selectmen's reports. Um, I have several items to talk about this evening, and starting off with the schools. Uh, there's been a great amount of things going on with the Dayton Rehoboth Regional School District under Bill Rooney. Last meeting, I reported that both Dayton Elementary and Dayton Middle School had received the honor of being named Feinstein Schools of Excellence. Today, I would like to also invite the members of the Board of Selectmen to Memorial Buddy Bench Presentation, to be held October thirtieth at noon, to dedicate a buddy bench in honor of retired sc- uh, sorry, a beloved school nurse, Rosie Borden, who had a huge impact on the Dayton community, was a longtime nurse at Dayton Elementary School. Um, this bench was purchased through donations from family, friends, and community members in the Dayton community, and the memorial raised four-thousand-seven-hundred-and-thirty dollars and nineteen cents. Uh, the organizers of this memorial were Carol Bosco and Andrea Castengay, and they have invited residents of the town if they would like to attend this presentation at Dayton Elementary School, uh, at the playground on Sunday, October thirtieth at noontime. We, it is very much a part of Dayton and Rehoboth to work together in many areas, and schools is just one of many areas. Um, the relationship with Stacy Ferry, Rob Johnson, and the Animal Control Officers of both communities, and their partnership in helping each other out in times of service is well-known in this community. Recently, Police Chief Cronin and Rehoboth Chief Trumbada have begun working together to develop and improve upon strategies for the high school in regards to security. And Superintendent Rooney earlier this year hosted a joint dinner meeting with the Board of Selectmen and School Committee of both towns to discuss ways how Dayton and Rehoboth could work closer together. And one of the things that came out of this dinner meeting was the formation of a forum to review the regional agreement of the school district. There has been some controversy over the interpretation of that agreement, and our goal, and the goal of that committee, is to clarify that document so it is easier to understand and to review the areas that have created some difference of opinion and some hard feelings. Uh, a week ago, a joint meeting was held... Uh, a week ago, a joint meeting was held of members of both Rehoboth and Dyton. From Dyton, um, Mr. Mullin, myself is the chairman, and Chris Andre, Chairman of the Dyton School Committee, joined Vice Chair of the School Committee, Aaron Moss, Mike Deegan, who serves as a member of the Board of Selectmen, but also is their chief financial person for the town. And the Board of Selectmen Chairman, Skip Vatney, worked on two issues, two committees that were part of the regional agreement that have not been completed or worked, or worked on for quite a while. And at the, at this meeting, the creation or the re-establishment of the Advisory Finance Committee and the 8 through 8 Academic Advisory Committee were re-established. Uh, on the Advisory Finance Committee, there will be members of FinCon. In the Academic Advisory Committee, PTO and School Council members will be asked to become involved with the Advisory Committee. One of the things that we wanted to stress is that the existing school councils will not be compromised in their role working with the individual communities. Um, we will be having our second meeting in December, I believe, the first week of December. And there are additional issues, um, including the funding of, the formula for funding of both communities that will be discussed and how we can make things more transparent. And hopefully that will lead to some of the, um, mistrust that town, each town has had for the other.
So what do you, uh, what are they going to be looking at? Because right now, there's a, there's a wealth tax. Rehoboth pays a little bit more for a student than Dyton does. Is there going to be anyone advocating that that change?
Right now, we, we're going to look at each other's perception of things. And one of the areas, although it's not specifically mentioned on the agenda, but will come up for discussion, is the issue of figuring tax evaluation and undervaluating. Rehoboth disproportionately taxes their businesses. Whereas Dyton, it's pretty much residential and industrial are pretty equal. As a result, Rehoboth has had the belief that we have done that just to decrease the value of the town. Now, one of the things that Mrs. Gulat, in discussions with Skip Vatney, or private, no, not at this meeting, and I have, have said to them that, no, we did that because we're trying to preserve business in the community. Um, so it's those type of things. We also have a big one, and I mentioned it is in litigation with the town of Rehoboth. Has to do with funds coming into the district up to the arrival of Bob Baxter. Mr. Baxter is the business manager, and he is working to change that. Example, in, in some court, is the solar projects of both Rehoboth and Dyton. When the money came in, it went into one account. It wasn't allocated, you know, Rehoboth Solar, Dyton Solar, High School Solar. It was one account solar. And when it came time to pay bills, they didn't differentiate. They just took out and paid. Well, there are disproportionate formulas used, 60, close to 60, 40 split. So now, once bills have been paid, Rehoboth asks, okay, you have this lump sum of money in one account. You paid bills. How much of that money belonged to Rehoboth? How much of that money belonged to Dyton? And they couldn't answer that question. Fortunately, going forward, Mr. Baxter is working to allocate so that the funds are allocated to the different areas, and they will know crystal clear where money is and how it would be allocated to each of the towns. Um, the past, that's going to be mitigated in court in Rehoboth. And I'm not so sure if Dyton down the road is going to have a claim against the district in regards to that. So, um, that's, there are many, some of those issues were bookkeeping issues. And those bookkeeping issues led to some accusations that there is a difference between malfeasance and shoddy bookkeeping. And what we're trying to de, to determine is which is which, and going forward so that those problems are fixed. And also to reassure both communities that, in the words of Superintendent Rooney, that the current administrations, whether it be School Committee or Board of Selectmen, are not going to hold each town guilty of the sins of the Father. We need to correct what has happened in the past, but then to move on in a positive way. And we, we had a very good start. We've had some lively discussions. And, excuse me, going forward, I, I think we will have some more. Um, it's a, it's been a good group, those guys over in Rehoboth. Very pleasant experience. Monday night, Mrs. Gulat and I met with the Rehoboth Board of Selectmen. Mrs. Gulat had originally asked to be placed on the agenda to thank the town of Dy, um, Rehoboth for their past support and their willingness to work closely with Dyte. She had scheduled that when she was a member of the Board of Selectmen. And what ended up happening was COVID hit, and it got postponed and, and never happened. And she wanted to reach out to them and to thank them for their support um, while she served on the board. I wanted to, and Nancy asked if I would go as well, to reassure that the people of the town of Rehoboth, that that spirit of cooperation is going to continue. And, um, as I mentioned, we had the opportunity to break bread with the superintendent. Mr. Karen, I believe you attended.
Yeah.
Um, I've had the opportunity to have dinner with, with members of the Board of Selectmen in Rehoboth. Um, not to talk business, but to develop camaraderie, to develop a, a spirit of friendship. Because both towns have something that I speak highly of, and they totally agree. And I said it at the meeting the other night. I said it at the Board of Selectmen meeting. I'll say it here. Both towns strongly believe in the values of God, family, country. Both communities work tirelessly, serving all their residents. And it was good to see, and they even remarked at the Board of Selectmen meeting, how we have a lot more in common than we have differences. And they feel confident, as I do, and I'm hoping my brothers here on the board do as well, that the differences that we have, we can work out. They have also extended an invitation to all three of us anytime that we wish to join them in a meeting, and that we can have a joint meeting to discuss how we could even extend that partnership. There are some things going on behind the scenes between Chief Trumbada and Chief Cronin that are security issues. So they'll be discussed privately, mutual aid, mutual support for each other. And I, I was very encouraged by what Chief Trumbada had to say about Chief Cronin and his willingness to work with the police of Rehoboth. So it was very encouraging. Um, the Dyton Industrial Development Commission, they have one brief announcement. On November 7th, here at Old Town Hall, from 6:00 to 8:00 p.m., the Dyton Industrial Development Commission, working with Serpit, will have an open forum to discuss industrial and commercial growth in the town of Dyte. Problems, and hopefully some potential ideas. You know, one of the ideas that came before us, and I believe the gentleman has had an initial discussion with the planning board, is the work of, along the Taunton River near Shaw's Boatyard, and the potential for commercial growth there as well. Very exciting presentation. So, uh, we're all invited to attend that open forum. It, it is not something that people have to stay the whole two hours. They can come in, listen to part of it, or offer their suggestions or concerns. And then lastly, uh, the Dyton Water District. I'm not going to talk about the, um, Main Street project because Mr. Cronin spoke at length about that. However, um, I, I do want to point out that the Cedar One Well Project is, is in the planning stages, and its goal for completion is the fall of 2023. And also, um, the Water District has agreed to enter into a grant program with the town of Dyte, the Efficiency and Regionalization Grant Program. And they unanimously voted to work with Mr. Mullin in developing that proposal. And I don't know if Mr. Mullin wants to add anything in regards to...
We have it a little later on the agenda for the Selectmen as well.
Okay.
So we can discuss it at that point.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
And that concludes my report. Mr. Karen, solid ways?
Yes, we met this past week. We had an exciting, uh, long meeting. Uh, we got a lot accomplished. There's room for why we have, we've got so much accomplished, but I won't get into that.
Yeah, I wasn't there. That was a joke. My expense again.
Sorry. Um, one of the things that we're responsible for is making recommendations to the Board of Health, which will come here and make recommendations to the Board of Selectmen. So what, what we say and do is not carved in stone. It's not like when we set fees, the Selectmen that set the fees, it's just our recommendation. And one of the things that we realized was our fees hadn't gone up since 2013, nine years. And obviously, the cost has gone up substantially. So we tweaked the fees in everything from mattresses to TVs to miscellaneous that they'll certainly present before us. Uh, one of the other things we had was another company who collects textiles uh, come from, uh, well, we had one a couple of weeks ago that we thought was fantastic. But they made a presentation to us this past week, and we thought they were even better. Uh, the price was about the same, but they offered more. Everything from, um, again, the bins at the trash recycle center to a bin for taking books. We don't get money for the books, but it keeps them out of the landfill. Uh, it keeps them out of the, uh, the trash. So, um, it, it's not going to be a windfall for us, but it will be a windfall in the sense that we will get something like seven cents a pound for, for clothing. Uh, and again, it keeps it out of the landfill. Uh, same thing with the books. The, um, uh, things that we got accomplished were tweaking the fees, the, uh, we talked about the, uh, taking the, um, credit cards, uh, over there so that we, which were allowing money for this town meeting, hopefully, uh, just to speed the process up. And that's about it. It was a good meeting.
Thank you. That, that committee, based on the mandates coming down from the state.
Yes.
The work that they're doing and the money that they're saving for this community is really incredible.
Right.
Thank you. Mr. Pacheco?
Yes, I have two reports. One on the Library Committee. I think the last meeting, I mentioned that I was appointed as the chair. Ron O'Connor was appointed as the co-chair, and Joz Luntavirus is the clerk for the meeting. Since that meeting, we've, um, had a tour of the building again with Jim Agia, with some of the members of the committee, and they got to look at the different changes. Our ADA coordinator, for example, went, as well as one of the members from the library. Three members of the library actually did the tour. Uh, so they were impressed with what the plans are, hopefully what the plans are going to be for the, the library. And today, we met with several contractors who are interested in putting in a bid, which started, opened up today, right, the bid?
Yeah, they're already open. They're due back on November 10th. So like we're, so the bids are definitely open. They're on the procurement, um, page of our website. So, yeah, so you can...
So, yeah, we're, so we're discussing what the bid is for. It's for the sheathing on the outside, insulating the building, uh, and replacing some of the, uh, the woodwork on the building. So we'll have an answer by November 10th. November 16th, the Library Committee will be meeting again. And we're going to talk about, we gave them several options as to, uh, what the sheathing will be on the outside. Uh, it sounds like red cedar is very, very expensive. It's, I think, it was a quarter of $1,100 for a 10 by 10 area, and we have, I forget, $3,700.
I forget the number off top, man, I'm sorry.
So it's very, and that's just for the, uh, red cedar shingles. That's not the hammering the red
Not the insulation.
Not the lever. And it's not the insulation. So that's very expensive. The other option is some kind of vital, look like shingles, which is not obviously historical, um, but it may be the preference because it's low maintenance.
Yeah.
Red cedar's going to be a lot of work to maintain it. And it's easier to apply, so it'd be cheaper as far as that goes. So we're looking forward to the bid. So on November 16th, we, uh, my understanding is the Library Committee will have a recommendation as to what bid?
Yes.
To the Board of Selectmen, and we may have to have a special meeting of the Board of Selectmen uh, to appoint this, because our next meeting is November 9th. Bids are in November 10th. Library Committee's going to look at those bids on the 16th. So the, is the suggestion that we meet at the end of November, everybody's available, so that we can address this as well as another issue. Uh, so I'm sure Mike will talk to you about the, the potential date that we have for that meeting. So, and there'll be a recommendation, and we have to decide which contractor we're going to go with. There were three that were there today. There were six that were interested, so we may get more bids.
Yep.
Uh, but we went and went all around the building and told them what we're looking for as work, as far as work. The Trails Committee meeting, we've had several meetings on October 20th. Uh, we had a meeting to discuss the, with DCR to discuss the possibility of either giving an easement for the, uh, the area behind 1712, or to sell them. I, and I made it clear that I'm not speaking for the Board of Selectmen. I'm supporting the easement. But they did mention that 10, 11 years ago, they went before the Board of Selectmen. And if the DCR was, at that time, was going to purchase the land for $50,000, uh, they said it's gone up a lot higher than that as far as, if we, if we give them the land, they're going to, they're going to give the town, uh, some money. So far, I think the Superintendent of Department of Public Works is not interested in selling it. I wasn't interested in selling it. But that was, that is something that we'll have to come back to the Board. I can't make the decision as far as what we're going to do for that. I did ask the question whether or not we can get an updated appraisal under not we can get an updated appraisal on the land. They said they won't do that unless we're seriously thinking about purchasing it and, I mean, letting them purchase it, which I don't think we're in that position. But I mean, if we're talking about a good chunk of money, something we might.
Right.
This is what, maybe three and a half acres, 3.4 acres of land.
See, like, it's a big parcel, like, and it's the biggest town-owned parcel that abuts the Taunton River. So that's why, I mean, so yeah, that's why we're, are very guarded of that parcel. I mean, I mean, again, that, oh, you know, like, it matters, oh, to the town it matters to us. I mean, like, we're, so, I mean, oh, you know, like, I mean, and so what, so what the DCF folks actually said, so like, is in the 11 or 12 years, oh, yeah, like, 11 or 12 years ago, when they first proposed it, our reasoning and rationale for, oh, you know, like, being really so cautious about it, as exact, so it's exactly the same in 2022 as it was 12 years ago. So, I mean, I think that, I mean, I think that says something right there. But again, I mean, oh, yeah, like, I mean, if the Board is interested, we can, so, yeah, like, we can pursue it. But, yeah, like, just, I mean, I mean, so like, we, I mean, I think there's a very strong sense is we, like, as a town, like to control the destiny, oh, you know, like, of what we have, especially where, like, where it's on the river. So like, we, so when we have an ability through an easement, really to accomplish the exact same thing.
So we're talking Park Alot and a way to begin the trip.
Mr. Mullen, when that comes before us, could we have, as part of the packet, a recommendation from Conservation and Open Space? How they view that, so that we can see how other departments feel about that, especially those two, and helping us to make that decision?
So like, so, yeah, like, I mean, I, so, I mean, I, so I, so I would say yes, but I mean, again, so that's even, so like, really, I mean, and this really isn't on the agenda. So like, we probably should add it on the agenda. But like, I mean, if the Board agrees that we don't, oh, that the Board itself really doesn't want to even entertain it, oh, you know, then we can really save like a step and just really say that we, so, yeah, that the, so, yeah, that the Boards and the towns' position is really to go the easement route. And that is, oh, you know, and that is really the direction. So like, I mean, it's, I mean, it's again, oh, yeah, like, so like, it's up to the Board, but I wouldn't want to have, yeah, to spin everyone's wheels if the outcome really isn't going to change in terms of the recommendation. That's just my thoughts.
Well, I believe we have an obligation to the voters to put it out there and get some feedback. So I'd be uncomfortable voting on it tonight. You don't need to.
Oh, yeah, no, yeah, like, we don't. That's not on the agenda anyways.
Right. But, yeah, I mean, we've had other pieces of property. We had one early this year that got pretty contentious because a group wanted the town to keep it. And we ended up selling it because another group wanted it sold. So I'd like to get more input from various stakeholders before I made a decision.
Okay.
I mean, I have my own personal opinion, but that's my personal opinion. I represent the voters, so I want to hear what they have to say.
And they can be invited to the Land Use Committee and the other committees can be invited to the public meeting where we're discussing this anyway. So. We also met on October 24th with the Feasibility Committee with Horstley and Witten Group. They invited some of the stakeholders. They're going to have, they're planning on having monthly meetings, and they will be inviting specific stakeholders as to what they're discussing. For example, if we're talking about ADA compliance, they'll invite Jonathan. If they're talking about the historic stuff on the trail, they'll invite the Historic Commission to that meeting. So that was a good meeting. In October 25th, we had a meeting last night, the Trails Committee itself. And what we discussed was the possibility of a walkway through the marshes around Murray Cove. There's 50 acres of land, if not more than that. We're talking about possibly trying to get a grant. I need to speak with the town administrator, Mike Mullen. He also wanted me to speak with Congressman Jake to see if there's any funds available for that. But Bill Fournette has been working on this for years and he has plans. He's had some studies done for us. So it sounds like an interesting project. We have a fair amount of marshland for a town, so we should try to preserve it, but also allow the residents to take a look at it, go out and take a look at it. So that's my two reports on my candidacy.
Mr. Pacheco, thank you.
Can I just ask Ken one question? The library, is there a stop estimate, stop time for the outside?
Yes. They want, I guess in the proposal, it might have said November 28th, but because we're probably not going to meet, I don't know if I can mention the date that I think we ought to be meeting on this. Am I?
So, yeah, yeah, we can, so one of the follow-ups that was discussed in the meeting earlier was contemplating, like, a special meeting for the fifth Wednesday in November, which is November 30th, like, which would allow, so, so like, essentially, again, as long as there's no supply chain issues, so which that is, oh, you know, the elephant in every room right now.
Right.
But if we were, hopefully under contract by the end of November, that means, I mean, again, barring any supply issues, we could get going and work through the winter on that.
Okay. Thank you.
Supply issue could be, could be a problem. But the, the library committee on November 16th, we'll be looking at samples of different sidings.
Yeah.
We all know what red cedar looks like, but if we're going to go with like a vinyl thing. And then we'll have recommendations to the Board as what colors we want it to be. We want it to look kind of like the way it looks now, but it's not going to be red cedar shingles.
No.
If you take a look at those shingles, they're terrible shape.
Yes.
And if we put reds, which I would prefer, but it's so expensive, I don't think it's realistic at all for the expected taxpayers to pay for that. So we're probably going to end up doing some kind of a vinyl, not the clapboard-looking vinyl, but shingle-looking vinyl.
Right.
And we have an option of numerous colors.
Yeah.
That we can pick. So I'm looking forward to that. And then we'll come back and make a recommendation on the 30th, so that whoever we give the contract to, they know what colors we're going for and what we're looking for.
Sounds excellent. Sounds exciting. Thank you. New business. We have review, discuss an act memorandum of understanding between the town of Dyton and the Dyton Dispatches, Mass. COP.
So, yes, as I mentioned, I mentioned earlier, in the special time meeting presentation, Chairman, that we did, we did recently settle a tentative agreement with the Dyton Dispatches on an agreement that calls for base wage increases of 2%, 2% and 2.5% for fiscal year '21, fiscal year '22, and fiscal year '23. The agreement, the agreement also includes reform to vacation time and sick time buyback provisions. Again, it also clarifies progressive discipline language to be better in line with settled employment law. Like, I really want to thank our selectmen, Karen, Chief Cronin, and the, and the Dyton Dispatches Union for, you're really there, worked with us in, oh, you know, like, in really the matter of about seven or eight weeks to bring this all together. We had a very, very good dialogue. And so, and I think this CBA, which was, which was also approved in the executive session prior to this meeting, I recommend that it be ratified and entered into by the Board this evening.
Are there any questions?
No, I just want to thank Selectmen Karen for the work that he's doing. This contract is a very good contract. It's a work as unfair to the town. So, thank you.
Dito. Thank you. Mr. Karen, anything?
No.
With that being said, I will entertain a motion to approve the memorandum of understanding between the town of Dyton and the Dyton Dispatches, Mass. COP.
I make that motion.
Second.
Motion made in second. All those in favor? Mr. Pacheco?
Aye.
Mr. Karen?
Aye.
Chairman Hull is an aye. Next on the agenda, review, discuss an act, Cable Committee request for hourly wage adjustment funded in budget from the cable license receipts. I have a letter from the Dyton Cable Committee. Dyton Cable Committee is requesting an increase in hourly rate for veteran committee members Dave Marvel and Laura Madeiras. David Marvel has been with the committee for over 10 years. Laura Madeiras has been with the committee for over five years. The two veteran members have been receiving minimum wage during their time on the committee. Over the last two years, the committee staff has been depleted, making the two existing members overwork. This committee is unique in the sense that it is weekly commitment. Hours will differ from week to week, and their hours can lead late into the night. The committee has requested an hourly rate of $20 for the veteran members David Marvel and Laura Madeiras. Should newcomers join the committee, they will be started at minimum wage. The committee is two years into their 10-year updated contract with Comcast, which funds their member's salary and all expenses made by the committee. This increase would not affect town citizens or the town budget. The committee has budgeted the same $20,000 in their salary line for numerous years, and it has not come close to spending this. If this were to pass, we request to put this into effect immediately as there are available funds for this action to take place. Thank you for your consideration, Dyton Cable Committee. Any questions?
Well, I'm a little confused. The Comcast pays their salary?
They, they pay, like, so Comcast pays licensing fees and other revenues that are required by the agreement, the licensing agreement we have with Comcast.
Yep.
Those revenues go into a dedicated revenue fund, which has a pretty, which has a pretty good retained revenue balance. Like, and all those dedicated revenues, approximately $30,000, $32,000 out of those revenues are funded each year in the town's operational budget.
Okay.
So, so we have, so we have a cable budget that draws, that draws specifically from the cable license revenue to fund all those budget expenses. And within those budget expenses, there's a $20,000 line for salary and personnel expenses. And, you know, like, in my view, it's a variable number because the amount of meetings, like, and the amount of employees, and the amount of employees that, that cable has is always evolving.
Yep.
So, and, so, yeah, but there is a pretty, there's a pretty, there's a pretty healthy dedicated revenue line that funds.
Okay.
That budget specifically. Does that help?
Yes.
Okay.
Mr. Pacheco, any questions?
Yeah, no, I haven't, I don't have any questions, but I'm going to support this. Their hours are just, from week to week, they, they change all the time. They can't do much planning sometimes. So I think reasonable, $20 an hour is a reasonable wage for the Cable Committee.
I had the opportunity to watch Mr. Marvel and Ms. Madeiras work for this town over the last two years. I want to thank them. Their sacrifice and their work for the town has been incredible. We've had occasions where there were two meetings going on at the same time, and they both, one worked here, one worked at prime time. Or recently, Mr. Marvel covered the dedication on a Sunday of the North Dyton Playground. Without both of them, it would be very difficult for the government in this town to inform the public of what is going on. They should be commended and rewarded for their fine efforts and their many, many hours each week. In addition, we're having trouble recruiting new members. And I think an increase in pay would also help in that regard as well. I think this is just a good step, a good community relations message that the town is willing to reach out to help support a very important program, and hopefully we'll get some new members.
It says here, the new members joining the committee will start at minimum wage. When would they move up to the $20 an hour?
I would assume.
After five years.
Mr. Marvel, would that be yearly? What type of salary schedule?
I'm not sure on the details, but it probably, like, every year, we'll give them, like, a portion till they get up to that amount.
Right.
You know, we can discuss that. But I said when they first started, they started minimum wage. We have a lot of times, we have people come down to cable, and they don't even stay. They stay a couple of weeks and say, I don't want to be here again. So it's, it's almost like, you know, we're down to two people who are loyal to take care of this. But for instance, I went out to a CTE meeting last week, if I'm saying that correctly, in PR, and I talked to Anthony, he's the judge of media. He's got a white boy and showed it to me and said, you know, hey, we're looking for cable operators in Dyton. And every week, he'd say, you know, any, you guys want to go down there? And they'd say, no, not really. So it's, you know, it's kind of tough. But I'm sure we can probably come up with some sort of structure where, you know, if they stay after a few months, we, you know, increment their pay till they get up to the $20. So we just have to figure that out.
Okay.
Ken, are you making a motion? Did you?
No, I didn't make a motion.
No, we haven't entertained. Unless there are any further questions, I entertain a motion to increase the Cable Committee, or to fund the Cable Committee request for an hourly wage adjustment funded in the budget from the cable license receipts for the sum of $20 per hour for veteran members David Marvel and Laura Madeiras, with new members being paid a fee that would be minimum wage.
I'll make that motion.
Second.
Motion made in second. All those in favor? Mr. Pacheco?
Aye.
Mr. Karen?
Aye.
Chairman Hull is an aye. Review, discuss an act, Community Compact Cabinet Efficiency Regionalization Grant regarding the Dyton Districts. Mr. Mullen?
Yes, and thank you, Chairman. So last, so last Wednesday, I sent an email out to the Board, to the Selectmen, and to the Commissioners of the Dyton Water District, the North Dyton Fire District Water Department, and, and the Dyton, and the Dyton Electric District. In the email, we just followed. Good afternoon, members of the Dyton Board of Selectmen, Dyton Water District, North Dyton Fire District Water Department, and Dyton Electric District. My right today to bring your attention to an important grant opportunity made possible through the State Community Compact Cabinet Efficiency and Regionalization Program. Please see more about the program online at the web link. You will note that this grant round just opened with an application due date of November 10th, 2022 at 12:00 p.m. In the email goes on, as we know, we've always placed an important priority on the relationship between the town of Dyton, including our assessing department, and, and treasurer collective's office in particular, and our respective district. This focus on this relationship has only strengthened in recent years due to heightened, heightened expectations relating to coordination, of taxing capacity and equity for town residents, capital infrastructure improvements, utility upgrades, community growth and development, and overall operations. Each of our respective districts have also seen or seen transitions in their respective leadership. leadership during the last year, which further brings attention to the priority and efficiency regarding our relationship in each of these areas. To that end, to that end, I respectfully seek your consideration and support to submit an efficiency and regionalization grant application that would allow us to hire, that would allow us to hire outside financial and engineering consultants who would work with us, who would work with us to assess and make recommendations on the current structure and relationship between each of our entities. Given the challenges we all face with the above-mentioned issues, we have a unique and timely opportunity to complete such an assessment that can only further inform and streamline our future efforts on behalf of the residents of Dighton. I would be happy to work with and speak to you and your respective district officials at the, at the earliest possible, at the earliest possible convenience. Please do not hesitate to reach out to me directly if you have any questions. So, as I mentioned, we have been placing, you know, in the year and a half that I've been here, like, a lot, like, a lot of emphasis on our financial management, you know, how we plan financially, you know, and how we structure, and how we structure our paying capital investments, you know, like, as it relates really to our capital needs, but also the growth we're facing as well. And I just, as I mentioned, you know, based on the transition space, you know, on, on the fact that it is twenty twenty, that it is twenty twenty-two, you know, like, and healthy assessments are always helpful and healthy, you know, I mean, you know, like, I do think this really could be, like, a very, you know, like, a very worthwhile endeavor, but I wanted really to reach out to the whole board to get your feedback before proceeding.
Pacheco, any questions?
No, I'm supporting this. I read the whole thing, so I'm supporting this. I think it's a good idea. We should be applying for this grant.
I support it as well.
Karen, thank you. With that being said, I will entertain a motion to authorize Mr. Mullin to work on the completion of this grant proposal involving the Dighton Water District, the Dighton Electrical District, and if approved, the North Dighton Water and Fire District.
I'll make that motion.
Second.
Motion made in second. All those in favor? Mr. Pacheco?
Aye.
Mr. Karen?
Is an aye.
Chairman Hull is an aye. Next on the agenda, review, discuss, and act, Chapter sixty-one A, two thousand four hundred and ten Cedar Street, map fourteen, lots forty-four, forty-seven. Elizabeth Patello, trustee of Cedar View Realty Trust. I have the request from the trust to, excuse me, one second. This letter is to inform you of my intent to sell a portion of land that is classified under Chapter sixty-one A. This property is on a separate deed registered with the Registry of Deeds Book one nine six three six, page thirty-four. The property is listed as twenty-four ten Cedar Street. This is an approximate three point seven-five acre lot of land containing two parcels. Assessors, map fourteen, lot ten. The property already has a house and will be sold for residential use. Your prompt attention on this matter would be greatly appreciated. I have letters from the Planning Board, the Board of Assessors, and Conservation Commissions, and they voted to waive their right of first refusal for the property that is listed. They are also recommending that the Board of Selectmen waive their right of first refusal for the property under discussion this evening. Is there any discussion?
No.
With that being said, I will entertain a motion that the Board of Selectmen waive their right of first refusal for the property located on twenty-four ten Cedar Street, map fourteen, lot ten.
I'll make that motion.
Second.
Motion made in second. All those in favor? Mr. Pacheco?
Aye.
Mr. Karen?
Aye.
Chairman Hull is an aye. I have a request from Father's House Family Church for an occupancy extension. I hope all is well in writing to request a three-month extension per the occupancy agreement. To date, we have looked at several parcels of land, but none have been viable. We are continuing to follow these and hope to find something soon. Is there any discussion?
No, this was part of the agreement. When we purchased the property, we gave them three months, and then they could request an additional three months. So, this is what they're doing, they're requesting the additional three months, but it will end.
End of January.
End of January.
That will be their, this is their only extension they can have after?
They can.
End of January, that's it? Or they can go in three months?
They can ask for more. I'm not, say, the board would support that, but we need to do work inside, so we, but they understand that it's going to be six months at the most.
Okay.
We have a wonderful relationship with Father's House Family Church, so I definitely will be supporting this. With that being said, unless there are any further questions, I'll entertain a motion to grant the request for an occupancy extension to Father's House Family Church.
I'll make that motion.
Second.
Motion made in second. All those in favor? Mr. Pacheco?
Aye.
Mr. Karen?
Aye.
Chairman Hull is an aye. Review, discuss, and act, proposed Roselli and Clark fiscal year twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four audit engagement letter. Mr. Mullin?
Yes. So, Roselli, Clark, and Associates have been our auditors, and we have a, like, a really healthy, like, working relationship with them. Our last agreement with them concluded with the audit, with the fiscal one, fiscal year twenty twenty-one audit, like, a management letter. So, what we're proposing and I'm recommending this evening is that the engagement letter, the proposed engagement letter for the years ended June thirtieth, twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-three, and twenty twenty-four, like, in the pricing that they have proposed, is like a five hundred dollar, five hundred, five hundred dollar per year, like, increase each year, which, which based, which based on the market, is extremely fair. You know, the, the, the municipal auditing world right now is, you know, have been increasing their rates very, 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 very significantly in this, you know, like, in what, oh, yeah, like, in what our auditors are proposing in terms of an engagement letter and the fees associated with that for the next three years are extremely fair.
Mr. Pacheco, any questions?
No, we've used them in the past, as our minister has said, so I'm satisfied.
Mr. Karen?
Yeah, I really don't know a lot about it, so if they recommended, I would go with that.
Thank you. I will entertain a motion to accept the engagement, proposed engagement letter, Roselli, Clark, fiscal years twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four. I would, this is a completed audit report, is that correct?
Yes, yes. And then also, based on the federal opera funding, we've been, like, we received and spent, like, in FY twenty-three, we will, we will need what is called a single audit for FY twenty-three, the current fiscal year, because we have expended more than seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars in my federal funding, and that, so, and those funds were expended to buy two oh seven Main Street. So, like, we will, like, we will also, like, in addition to, but the fee structure that has been proposed, we will require a single audit. And as, and as page two of their engagement letter proposes, should you require a single audit, an additional audit fee will apply. We expect this fee will range between four, four thousand to five hundred, oh, yeah, oh, yeah, four to five thousand dollars for the first federal audit award, subject to a single audit, like, and fifteen hundred to two thousand dollars for each additional federal award that is subject to a single audit. But those funds, we have actually the ability to fund, like, through our, through our dedicated opera funds anyways. So, like, we have, so, yeah, we have a payment mechanism for that.
So, will we need to do two motions, or can we just do a motion to engage the firm of Roselli, Clark, and Associates to complete audit work for the town?
Yeah, yeah, based on the accompanying engagement letter, yes.
I will entertain a motion to enter into an agreement with Roselli, Clark, and Associates to complete auditing work for fiscal year twenty twenty-two, fiscal year twenty twenty-three, fiscal year twenty twenty-four, for the terms included in this engagement letter.
I'll make that motion.
Second.
Motion made in second. All those in favor? Mr. Pacheco?
Aye.
Mr. Karen?
Aye.
Chairman Hull is an aye. Review, discuss, and act, the request to appoint Sarah Gilmet to the Insurance Committee. Dear Ms. Kirwin, I am being told that Captain Reddy's retirement. There will be a vacancy on the Insurance Committee. Dighton Fire Local four three three two has elected firefighter paramedic Sarah Gilmet to take his place on the committee. If you have any questions, or if we need to fill out your paperwork, please let me know. Dighton Fire Local four three three two, President Matt Silva. Are there any questions?
No.
With that being said, I will entertain a motion to appoint Sarah Gilmet to the Insurance Committee.
Make that motion.
Second.
Motion made in second. All those in favor? Mr. Pacheco?
Aye.
Mr. Karen?
Aye.
Chairman Hull is an aye. Review, discuss, and act, facilities request, Council on Aging, For Tachi Classes. I have this request before us from the Council on Aging. They will be using Old Town Hall upstairs every Friday, starting at nine A M. and ending at ten A M. There are no conditions for approval by either Board of Health or the Park and Rec. So, with that being said, I will entertain a motion to approve.
I'll make that motion.
Second.
Motion made in second. All those in favor? Mr. Pacheco?
Aye.
Mr. Karen?
Aye.
Chairman Hull is an aye. Review and discuss an act, a request for a one-day liquor license by the Lots Arts Club, the Lions Arts Festival on Sunday, November sixth, from nine A M. to three P M. Are there any questions in regards to this request? And?
They're also asking for the fee to be waived, right?
Yes. I also noticed that we probably, before we vote on that, could we revisit the Council on Aging, Tachi Classes? And I ask for a motion. We voted to approve the request, but we didn't vote to approve the waiving of the Old Town Hall rental fee.
We wouldn't need to, in my recommendation, because they're a town department.
Okay, thank you. Are there any questions, then, in regards to the one-day liquor license for the Lions Club Arts Festival?
No.
I will entertain a motion to approve the one-day liquor license for the Lions Club Arts Festival, scheduled for Sunday, November sixth, from nine A M. to three P M.
I can't make that motion, I'm a member.
I'll make that motion.
I will step down as chair to second that motion. All those in favor?
Aye.
Chairman Hull is an aye.
I'll abstain.
And Mr. Karen, I'm sorry, Mr. Pacheco will abstain. The motion passes. I will entertain a motion to waive the fees associated with the use of the facility for the Lions Arts Festival. Now, I believe that is going to be at the Pavilion, is that correct?
No, it's at Rujo's.
Rujo's, okay. So, it won't be necessary to waive that, that fee? There is no fee involved, correct?
So, you have the fee for the one-day alcohol license?
Okay. I will entertain a motion that we waive that fee for the one-day liquor license.
Second.
Well, you, you have to make the motion.
Oh, I'm sorry, I make that motion.
I will step down as chair to second the motion. All those in favor? Mr. Karen?
Aye.
Chairman Hull is an aye.
I'll abstain.
Mr. Pacheco abstains, the motion passes. Acknowledgements? Are there any additional acknowledgements? Mr. Mullin?
No.
I don't see any correspondence. We have before us approval of the Board of Selectmen's regular meeting minutes of October twelfth, twenty twenty-two. Are there any questions in regards to these minutes?
No.
I will entertain a motion to approve the minutes of the Board of Selectmen's regular meeting minutes of October twelfth, twenty twenty-two.
I'll make that motion.
Second.
Motion made in second. All those in favor? Mr. Pacheco?
Aye.
Mr. Karen?
Aye.
Chairman Hull is an aye. Approval of the warrants.
I'll make a motion that the warrant stated October nineteenth, twenty twenty-two be approved by the Board of Selectmen, sixteen A dash twenty-three, hundred and four thousand, one hundred and eighty-two, one hundred and eighty-two dollars and ninety-five cents. Sixteen B dash twenty-three, two hundred and sixteen thousand, five hundred and fourteen dollars and eighty-five cents.
I have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Motion made in second. All those in favor? Mr. Pacheco?
Aye.
Mr. Karen?
Aye.
Chairman Hull is an aye. Warrant dated October twenty-sixth, twenty twenty-two.
I'll make a motion that the Board of Selectmen approve the warrant stated October twenty-sixth, twenty twenty-two. Seventeen A dash twenty-three, hundred and seventeen thousand, three hundred and seventy dollars and sixty cents. Seventeen B dash twenty-three, eighteen thousand, four hundred and twenty-six dollars and sixty-seven cents. And seventeen C dash twenty-three, three hundred and fifty-six thousand, seven hundred and six dollars and eighteen cents.
You make that motion.
Aye. Mr. Karen, you second the motion?
Oh, you make the motion?
I made the motion.
He made the motion.
I'll second.
Motion made in second. All those in favor? Mr. Pacheco?
Aye.
Mr. Karen?
Aye.
Chairman Hull is an aye. It will be necessary for us to enter into an executive session under Massachusetts General Law, Chapter thirty A, Section twenty-one A three, to discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining. If an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the bargaining position of the public party, and the chair so declares, I so declare, in regards to Dighton Town Clerical Library and Council on Aging Union Laborers, Local two seventy-two, and also under Massachusetts General Law, thirty A, Section twenty-one A seven, to comply with or act under the authority of any general or special law or federal grant and aid requirement, to approve the executive session minutes of the Board of Selectmen's executive session meeting of October twelfth, twenty twenty-two. I will entertain a motion.
I'll make that motion.
Second.
Motion made in second. All those in favor? Mr. Pacheco?
Aye.
Mr. Karen?
Aye.
Chairman Hull is an aye. We will not be returning back to a regular session, and we will adjourn following the executive session. Thank you, and have a good evening. Thank you, and have a good evening.